Okay, Mayor, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene city council success agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now seven thirty one P M. Wednesday, January thirteen twenty twenty one. Local, please.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
And Councilmember Montau.
Here.
All right. Salute to the flat with big councilmember Doe. The invocation will be councilmember Ho.
Okay.
Please stand up and place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I bless allegiance to the flat of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray tonight to whatever source we turn to for strength. We pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interest for city and its citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, councilmember Doe and councilmember Ho. Next report from city attorney.
Really, hold on for a second. I think we're having issues with the broadcast at the moment. One second. Okay, Mayor, we're good again.
How come I?
Yeah. Okay, there it's gone.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so next we have report from city attorney, please.
Yes, there's nothing to report from closed session, but there is one item I believe we need to add to the agenda tonight. It's a late urgency item.
Okay. So we have request from stop to add urgency item number six point two. So may I have a motion?
Let's, what's the concern? It's an emergency order, I believe. Just want to state what it concerns. It's a resolution reaffirming the proclamation twenty twenty zero one and resolution forty nine eighty three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. This is something that needs to be redone every sixty days. So it's important that we have it done in a timely way. So it needs to be added.
So may I have a motion?
Approve, move to approve.
Move to approve. Can we have a motion in a second to add an urgency item number six point two to our tonight agenda?
Yes, I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen and seconded by councilmember.
No.
No, yes, that's correct, to add the item. So.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Ho.
Councilmember Ho.
Did she disappear? I think we lost her. We lose her? Okay, so we lost her. So I guess we will just, absent for this vote.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried four to zero with.
Yes, on my part.
Perfect. Okay, that motion carried four to zero with councilmember Ho absent. And that'll be to add urgency item six point two.
All right. We don't have any special presentation for tonight's meeting. Next, oral communication.
Actually, we actually have a report from city tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I don't see that on agenda.
Oh, uh, it's there. I'm there. So just a couple of things to report. First off, we've extended the deadline to submit applications for commissions and committees. That deadline is now at five thirty P M. On Monday, January eighteenth, for anyone who would like to apply to serve on a commission or committee. In addition, the city would like to provide a few updates regarding COVID nineteen. So I'd first like to introduce Acosta, who's our emergency services coordinator, followed by Diana Daubert, our community services director, and they'll speak on a few efforts and information regarding COVID nineteen.
Anything else?
I'm just, I'm just gonna bring them on. Hold on to just. Hey, Robert, you're up.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Ta, sorry, council and staff. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Robert Acosta, I'm the emergency services coordinator for the city, and I've been asked to provide a COVID update for the council. As you all are well aware, the past few weeks, we've seen a significant spike in the number of positive COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations in the Southern California region, more specifically in Orange County. The growth has been staggering as the current hospitalization rate is triple of the highs that we saw last January. As a point of reference, there are over two thousand patients hospitalized with COVID nineteen. And of those, five hundred are in ICU. And you see those numbers and sometimes we kind of lose their meaning, but just to put that in perspective, seventy percent of all the adults that are used are COVID positive. And the result is it's leaving just forty eight ICU beds in all of Orange County that are available for all other critical care needs. As a result of that, the thirty three hospitals in Orange County have implemented surge plans to accommodate the increased patient load. Those surge plans mean everything from doubling, adjusting nurse to patient ratio, and there's also some surge mobile hospitals that have been put up in various hospitals in the area. However, there is some good news on the way. The COVID vaccine rollout is well underway, and the name of that program is called Operation Independence. The key goal of Operation Independence is to have everybody that wants a vaccine to be vaccinated by July fourth, twenty twenty one. To achieve that goal, the healthcare agency will use five points of distribution or pods, and the first pod opened at Disneyland today. The other four pods are slated to open in the very near future, and they're at Knott's Berry Farm, the Great Park, Orange County Fairgrounds, and Socha University. The bulk of the vaccines to be delivered in Orange County will be delivered through these pods. There will be some support, they will be supported by a small number of mobile pods, and those are going to be specifically for some targeted groups. Currently, the healthcare agency is reporting that they vaccinated over fifty six thousand people. That's countywide. They're using a tiered approach, and the tiered approach vaccinates the highest risk individuals first. And it's been modified from when this started late December to now. And the most recent modification was as recently as yesterday. They added sixty five and older to the group to be, to receive vaccine. The best way for people to receive a vaccine is to use the Athena app. It's O T H E N A. The Athena app allows citizens to make appointments and to receive the vaccines. It also provides follow-up appointments for the second dose. The Athena app can be found on the city website and also the healthcare agency's website. Another option is to call their health providers, their health providers. Some, some of the larger health providers have vaccines in stock, and they're making arrangements to, to vaccinate their, their patients. Internally, we are active, we are actively vaccinating our police department employees. We're using multiple porters, portals to achieve this. And right now, we're just rough numbers. We're looking at about fifty percent that are vaccinated or have scheduled to be vaccinated. We've had, so we hope to have that done within the next few weeks and be complete with that. We've had multiple employees test positive in the city for COVID nineteen. We, we have follow-up protocols in place and for these cases, and they involve reporting to the healthcare agency, and now we report to OSHA, and we have some other contact tracing protocols and things like that. To date, though, there is no evidence of any workplace transmission. All our cases have been coming from the outside and coming in, and we've been not, been very lucky, fortunate in that there's been no workplace transmission. I believe part of that success of no workplace, workplace transmission can be directly attributed to the employees' compliance with wearing masks, with hand sanitizing and respecting the social distancing. So it's been very fortunate for us because that changes the way we do our follow-up work. As far as our keeping people safe, we use P P E quite a bit. Our P P E supplies remain in good, in good supply, and we don't anticipate a shortage in any time. Recently, yesterday, we were contacted by the healthcare agency about establishing a mobile clinic that was designed to serve our senior community. So in discussions that we had with them as recently as today, we hope to partner up with them in the very near future, and we'll be able to help protect this at-risk population in the, in the, in the city. Lastly, these pods, the mobile ones and the big ones are going to require volunteers. They require volunteers from the cities, citizens as well as public employees. And the citizens that if they want to help out can sign up via an app called One O C. It's O N E O C. It's, that also is available on our website, and, and it's available on the healthcare's website, but you can volunteer to be, to, to help out of these pod sites. And if a citizen volunteers and they put in, if they volunteer for at least four shifts, regardless of what tier they're in, they will be vaccinated. So that's kind of a nice little bonus for, for those people that are helping out, and it protects them too. So that's the end of report unless there's any questions.
Yes, Augusta, I really appreciate for your report. Yes, and thank you. But I have a question that, I mean, we all aware that there is a website out there regarding the vaccine, but I mean, I receive a lot of call and email. A lot of people, they try to get into the website and for somehow that, you know, it did not really work. And for the app, so how can the senior, they, they not aware of that? Or they not really high technology skill and how, and how can they handle the app? Is any, and you know, all the information, do we have that in Vietnamese and Spanish?
So, so a couple of questions there, right? The Athena app is where, Orange County is being beta tested with it, and it's been modified almost on a daily basis where they're trying to make it effective. They took it down for a few hours yesterday. We weren't aware that they took it down, and so a lot of people ran into that problem where the site was down. It's just, they're just refining it, like I said, almost on a daily basis, and hopefully it'll be better sooner rather than later because we've heard people that jump right on, they get an appointment, and then we've heard others that probably what you've heard. They can't, they can't sign on, they just get that perpetual will of death, and, or the system won't just let them in at all. So I know the county's working hard to refine that and get that better. I, I fully can appreciate that there's, we might have some of our senior citizens that are not real savvy to get on a phone, go onto an app and sign that up. So that's why we're very hopeful that these, these mobile pods are designed for the senior citizens are going to start sooner rather than later. The conversation I had with the county today suggested that they anticipate having these up, at least the first one up in a week. So we'll be working with them, and obviously, there's the, our area is an area that they've identified as a, as a target area. And so we, we'll hope to get that senior app better. And I know, I think Diana will speak to that later about how, what she's done to prep for that kind of stuff. But let's see, the other question for the app, did I miss something? Oh, the language. That's something that came up. I've only seen some of those flyers in English. And at the conference call tomorrow, we, we have that in our list of questions of something that needs to be addressed. So we'll approach that tomorrow on our eleven o'clock call.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Acosta, I, I missed a, you have five pots, right? I got the Knott's, O C Fairground, Costa Mesa, Great Park, what, the name of the university?
Oh, Socha University. That's Socha, S O K A. It's in South Orange County. And I believe it's in the city of Eliso Guejo, but it's down in the area off of the seventy three freeway in that area.
Great job. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm up. Ready for me? Good evening, Mayor Ta. Good evening, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Nguyen and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on what Community Services and Recreation Department has been providing to our community since the onset of the pandemic. We quickly transitioned to emergency management mode as our first priority was the health and well-being of our residents. Within the first two weeks of the pandemic, Community Services Team quickly put together a database of thirteen hundred Westminster seniors over the age of sixty five. We implemented a telecare-friendly call program. Questions were crafted to help reveal the needs of our seniors. Last week's staff completed the fortieth week of calls. Thousands of calls had been made to Westminster seniors over the age of sixty five in three languages. Several of these seniors either reside alone or do not have extended family members checking in on them. Relationships have been developed, and weekly calls will continue to be made. Through the connections made through the telecare-friendly call program, staff identified that the seniors were in need of essential items such as paper products, cleaning supplies, and non-perishable food items. To meet the need, we converted a room at the senior center into a collection area. This is where we keep the essential items. On a weekly basis, these items are available to our seniors by request and are picked up at the center. There's been no interruption with our home-delivered meal or congregant meal programs. The home-delivered meal clients continue to receive three meals a day, which are delivered a day in advance by our volunteers. The Congregate Meal Program, which is now called the Grab and Go Meal Program, continues to provide frozen meals to seniors and are distributed at the senior center on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Last week, we distributed two thousand five hundred and forty meals. We had to purchase, we had to purchase additional freezer and refrigerator capacity to support the increased need. If seniors are unable to come to the center, we have staff delivering the meals to their home. We did pause our senior transportation program that, however, last month, we restarted it with modifications on Wednesdays. Our eighteen-seat passenger paratransit vans can now only accommodate three seniors at a time. We continue to main contact with our transportation clients to see if we can assist with any of their in-town transportation needs. Majority of these clients receive other services by the center and are called, if not on a daily basis, weekly basis. This week, we started a list of interested seniors aged sixty five and older who would like to receive the COVID vaccine and would be willing to immediately travel to a designated area in the county to obtain it. No promises have been made, however, the minimal effort can be used to avoid throwing a viable vaccine away. It's absolutely worth the effort. Thus far, we have twenty nine seniors on the list. So Mayor Ta, any of the councilmembers, if you have seniors that are over the age of sixty five and are interested in getting the vaccine, we can create another list because I, we have made a request to receive the, the mobile pod to get the vaccine. So there's absolutely something that we're ready to make happen as soon as possible. Let me just scroll down here. More stuff to come. There's been much discussion on how the senior center will operate post-COVID. Staff evaluated different models and believes the safest way to aid the centers through a central check-in and checkout system. This will assist with ensuring we have current participation, participation information, and will help evaluating programs and services to see if more, or if they need to be offered more or less frequently. In an effort to assist with these elements, we are implementing a free membership registration program. New hardware and software has been purchased, which allows us to check in seniors through the use of their three free membership card. We plan to launch this program once the senior center reopens. Several months ago, at a council meeting, Mayor Ta requested that anyone in need of a mask should be able to get one. That next day, we began reaching out to local churches and nonprofit organizations. To date, the, the department has received more than six thousand masks, both adult and children, and we have distributed more than four thousand of them. Any resident in need of a mask can get one by contacting the Senior Center, Family Resource Center, or the Community Services Department. Senior Center continued to offer its programs and services to the community, specifically to families with children eight, zero to eighteen years of age. The F R C maintains service delivery via phone, email, and virtual platforms in three languages. Since March, in collaboration with our partners, the F R C has provided information referral services to over thirteen hundred individuals. More than a hundred families have been provided with family support services, and a hundred and sixty one families have received emergency assistance, which includes food, diapers, gift cards for basic needs, rental and utility assistance. Some of this funding did come from the County of Orange Care's funding. Additionally, more than sixty families received food and other basic need items at our monthly clementine food trolley. With the support of our partners, residents received counseling services, participated in personal empowerment programs, as well as participate in parenting, parenting education classes. The F R C has hosted several family fun activities, including our first-of-its-own virtual talent show, the holiday events such as Friendsgiving and the Holly Jolly Holiday Party, other important workshops that have been conducted online about immigration services and health insurance. For the holidays, over a hundred families received board games, gifts, and family fun activity kits. Despite the pandemic, the F R C is well on track to exceed all of their annual service goals. The Recreation Division quickly shifted programming, and by April second, created a virtual recreation center, which includes, which continues to be updated on a weekly basis, featuring activities and educational opportunities. Staff distributed summer family grab-and-go activity kits weekly during the summer at three parks. We worked with our contract instructors to offer as many virtual classes as possible. As the state colored tier system permitted, we transitioned typical indoor classes to outdoor locations. Since March, more than eight hundred members of our community, primarily healthcare workers, have taken our CPR and A E D training or recertification classes facilitated by our contract instructor partner, Heart-to-Heart CPR. City special events such as summer concerts and tree line ceremony were moved online, featuring highlights from previous events. We transitioned on to an online version-only quarterly newsletter and recreation guide designed by in-house staff, which will result in significant general fund savings. Lastly, we prioritized communication with weekly email blasts to our recreation customers, as well as increased our social media presence. I'm so proud of our Community Services Team. Each one of them has gone above and beyond the call of duty. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the tremendous support received by our city manager, Sherri Johnson. For that, I will always be grateful, as well as the support we received from every city department. Alexis Middle, Community Development, identified additional funding for us to use. Aaron Bax, our Finance Director, created new accounts and cleared the path so that we could acquire the necessary supplies. Police Chief Lotterback, his team was always available to serve and support our operation. Sergeant Weber has been, has been incredible to work with, as well as Robert Acosta. The Public Works Department Director, Marwan Youssef, and Assistant Director Jake No. They have assisted with different requests on a weekly basis, never saying no. This concludes my update.
Really appreciate that, Ms. Anna Dobler, and thank you. You and of your staff for your dedication and deep effort. I know that our city staff, they all work really, really hard, especially during this pandemic. Really appreciate that. So I have a question that if, if seniors really want to get a vaccine and calling me or other councilmembers, so basically that we only need to email you the list, right?
We need their name and their phone number.
Okay, got it.
Name, the phone number.
Okay.
And, and we can communicate to them in any, in the three languages that our community requires. So that will not be a problem. And, and we would like them to be Westminster residents, of course.
Got it.
Do you have the number that they can, Diana, do you have the number that they can contact you directly? Should they contact you directly?
Yes, but if I'm not available, our general line, there's always somebody that answers the phone. So for efficient purposes, I'm going to give two numbers out. The Senior Center is the best place for seniors to call, which is seven one four eight nine five two eight seven eight. There's a live person there Monday through Friday, seven A M. to five thirty P M.
Okay.
Community Services is also available four days a week to make calls to with our folks that are under the age of sixty five. So we'd be more than happy to provide any vaccine information right now. It's limited information that we have, but that Community Services Direct Line is seven one four eight nine five two eight six zero.
All right, thank you for that.
I just want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana, for your presentation, also for Robert, thank you as well. I'm so glad that, I mean, we have such an awesome team here in our city where everybody changed hats and took on, actually took on multiple hats and, and just made this community, just came together for our community. So I want to thank everybody, and everybody, every staff member in our city, and our police department as well. I just had a question. How are you doing as far as supplies for food, especially? How was that? How was that?
The essential items, I mean, we, we are doing really good. We just received some additional funding through Alexa, through Community Development that started as of January first, so that is going to be very helpful. We've actually, within the last month, had another hundred and sixty seniors want meals. So in order for us to be able to do that, we have to purchase additional freezer and refrigeration capacity. So we're in the process of making that all happen, and funding is made available. So we are good with that, but we won't turn away any donations. We, we've had so many good partners in this process. To point out, the grocery outlet in Westminster, they, they are true angels. They, they've been providing canned goods to us at their cost. They also provided a fundraiser and raised money for us to go shop there to bring items back to the center. Hope Community Church, and I, I am going to, if I start listing, I know I'm going to miss organizations, so I don't want to do that. But it's just, it's been such an amazing time to connect with the community and people and businesses that you wouldn't ordinarily connect with, you are connecting with. So lots of great relationships have been developed, and this new interest in the senior center, I'm just excited when it reopens because we have so many more participants that are engaging in our programs now that did before the pandemic. So lots of good things to come.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You so much. Really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Great work. We, we.
All right. City Clerk, is that all for our presentation?
That's all for City Clerk report, yes.
Thank you so much. Next, we have oral communication.
Yes, so we received quite a few ecomments, so I'm just going to read them briefly, and then we had a request for speakers as well. So first one is from Vietnamese American Anonymous, and it just states, "Dear Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, writing this letter to request that the council denounce the failed, the failed coup that occurred in our nation's capital last Wednesday. In addition, as a city with the largest Vietnamese dispora population within the U S, please announce the individuals that flew the South Vietnam flag during that infamous day. Seeing the flag in our nation's capital that my father once proudly defended, it sickens me to the core. I cannot believe that there were Vietnamese Americans who participated in storming the capital. These acts tarnish the legacy that South Vietnam once stood for, freedom and democracy. Today, I can't see it, but represent not only the failed coup, but the attempt to overthrow the results of a legitimate election that over one hundred sixty one million participated in last November's general election. It is akin to seeing the Confederate flag being flown, and I do not want the South Vietnam flag ever to be attributed to that whatsoever. Please condemn these acts and the people who flew the flag. Thank you for your time. Regards, former Westminster resident." And then we have another one from a Malcolm Willis, and it states, "First, I'm hearing about this new development project for the first time, which is a civic center condo project. I feel that the city council should refuse this development based on the negative impact that this will have on our community. based on the negative impact that this will have on our community. My request is based on the obvious effects on the area regarding the population density, not to mention the architectural lack of continuity to the Civic Center. Also, if these condos are built, it would impact the parking for all City Hall business, seniors, court patrons, and the Rose Theater. I've been informed that the plans currently have no plans to address the parking element of the project, which is mandatory with all building plans submitted to the city. There must be other alternatives for condo developments within the city, i.e. the Westminster Mall. I trust that City Council will look out for the best interest and the aesthetics of our Civic Center. Again, that's from Malcolm Willis. I have one from Diana Carey regarding the Civic Center development, which states, The subject of my comments tonight concern the disturbing reasons for the resignation of the reputable management firm Kelly and Associates, the independent third-party tasked with overseeing the development of the Civic Center. I can't say the allegations were at all surprising. Mr. Sheldon has not fulfilled his obligations to uphold professional construction standards for the, for the development of the project, including the parking management plan called for in the ENA. Several years ago, I attended three public hearings on this project that were well attended by our residents. The Sheldon and Associate Plans were poorly received and heavily criticized because they were not in line with the newly adopted general plan and did not present any studies, including an analysis of area traffic use and congestion. Mr. Sheldon personally and cavalierly dismissed concerns regarding, including those regarding the ability of major area stakeholders to conduct business, which include the Rose Center, Catering Business, Coastline Community College, the Court, and the Courthouse. In a note of irony on tonight's agenda, item four point one is an issue concerning a nightclub permit for two businesses, which includes a parking impact study. Yet for a project of this magnitude, Mr. Sheldon continues to deflect blame and refuses to comply with that requirement, a requirement for which every other developer, both large and small, has complied. Thus, I request the following, council due diligence prior to any advancement of this project, that the council agendize a review of the recommendations of the general plan, as Mayor Ta was the only council member present during the development and adoption of the general plan. That Sheldon and Associates be held to professional processes and practices, including a parking management plan, as called for in the ENA. Each of the Civic Center stakeholders be informed and included in the plans for the development of the Civic Center. No further time extensions be granted, and an independent third-party management firm be hired to oversee this project. Thank you for your time. That's from Diana Carey. Next one is from Nancy Levin Blumenthal, and it's regarding Civic Center Parking. States, As a thirty-seven-year resident of Westminster, a former trustee of the Westminster School Board and a member of the Foundation of the Rose Center, and as an attorney, I'm concerned about the proposal to build additional condominiums in the Westminster Civic Center area and its effects on the parking situation near the Civic Center. As you are aware, the parking lots currently being considered for reallocation are used by jurors and visitors to the court, as well as patrons of the Rose Center Theater and Coastline Community College. The court, which was originally designed to be used solely for small claims and municipal courts, has now been expanded and converted to a Superior Court, which shares cases in the civil and criminal courts, which require a pool of jurors in order to assure the administration of justice. Those visitors and jurors need a place to park. In addition, a family law court has now been established in the court, which will handle divorces, custody hearings, and other family-related matters, also requiring witnesses and families to participate in these hearings who will need to have parking available. To convert the parking lots currently in use by essential visitors of the court, as well as those who enjoy the adjoining Sid Goldstein Park and the Rose Theater, would be a substantial loss to the judicial process, as well as to the residents of our community who enjoy the use of community facilities. I'm requesting that the council reject the proposed condominiums and its impact on parking necessary for the use of our courts, Civic Center, and theater, and general enjoyment of our city. Again, that's from Nancy Levin Blumenthal. Next one is from Sylvia Garrett, and its subject is proposal to build condos in a Civic Center. States, Dear Westminster City Council, the request for the elimination of parking lots in the Civic Center will place an extreme hardship on the thousands of people who use the City Hall and facilities, community services, recreational, cultural, and educational programs, and businesses on a daily basis. The uses in the Civic Center include but are not limited to City Hall, Community Services, Coastline College, Council Chamber, Jay's Catering, Library, Police, Rose Center Theater, Senior Center, Sid Goldstein Memorial Park, and West Court. The developer has an agreement with the city to have a parking master plan done, which would serve as an impact study. He's not performed per his own agreement. The request to purchase city land should be denied. This is not the best use for city property. This developer should also know that very few people would purchase a condominium in that location with the amount of traffic, noise from the courts and police department, and the many other uses which may not benefit them. As a Realtor who works and owns property in Westminster, I know that the developer can find several other locations, some of them currently blighted, which would accommodate and welcome new residential construction. Again, please deny this request outright. And that's from Sylvia Garrett. One from Dawn Anderson, which states, At the city council meeting in November eleven twenty twenty, three of you voted to extend the exclusive negotiation agreement with Sheldon Development for the development of one hundred and three three-story condominiums in the Westminster Civic Center. Is my understanding the ENA requires the developer to provide a parking master plan to the city by February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one? That only leaves the developer about six weeks to have the plan prepared and submitted. Please remind the developer of his obligation to submit the parking master plan to the city by February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Thank you. And again, that's from Dawn Anderson. The last ecomment received is from Diane Mackus, and it states, Westminster City Council, it has come to my attention that Mr. Sheldon does not want to have a parking master plan done. As of this date, he has not retained a firm to do the plan in accordance with the latest agreement between Mr. Sheldon and the city. If the city allows Mr. Sheldon to proceed with his personal plan without consideration, it will greatly affect Civic Center, including City Hall, Community Services, Coastline College, Council Chamber, Jay's Catering, Library, Police, Rose Center Theater, Senior Center, Sid Goldstein Memorial Park, and West Court. These well-established businesses will not benefit from the condos and in fact will be adversely affected. I ask you to please look out for the businesses listed above and demand that a consultant prepare a parking master plan and submit the completed plan to the city by February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one in accordance with the agreement between Mr. Sheldon and the city. Respectfully, Diane Mackus. That's all I have for ecomments. And then as far as speakers, I have a request to speak from Mr. Dan Corolla. So if he's on, Mr. Corolla, if you're on, if you can just press star six to unmute yourself. Mr. Corolla, I heard the phone. Could you press star six again?
Okay.
There you are.
My name. My name is Dan Corella, a Westminster homeowner.
Mr. Corolla, you unmuted yourself. You muted yourself again. But we heard you. If you could press star six again to unmute yourself.
My name is Dan Corella, Westminster homeowner for forty-two years. Good evening, Mayor Ta and members of the city council. And a special welcome to new member Carlos Monzo. Good luck to you, Carlos Monzo, because you're replacing a genuine people's advocate in Sergio Contreras, who definitely will be missed. My major focus tonight is to publicly acknowledge Dr. Marwan Youssef, Westminster's Public Works Director. Earlier last year, he made a presentation at city council about a street improvement project in a portion of Westminster. The council approved his funding request, the project moved forward, and it turned out to be an outstanding success when it was completed several months or so ago. The contractor not only did all the paving work well, but was also very resident-friendly. He gave timely advanced written notices, kept to his work schedule timeline, and was neat and thorough in all his cleanups. This project deserves attention because this is how we resident taxpayers want our city tax money spent. This project has a direct benefit to every motorist who travels over one of these newly paved streets. And of course, we are all aware of the overwhelming number of motorists who reside in Westminster. This project brought a lot of benefit to a lot of people. Now, every decade seems to present the city of Westminster with a new financial dilemma. Now, it's here we go again with the pandemic all around us and its chilling effect on city businesses. As the financial trustees for the ninety thousand residents of Westminster, you have enormous responsibility under normal circumstances. And now with the way the economy is, each of you better have a lot of foresight, intuition, and a lot of common sense in order to keep this city solvent. I would hope that you would give financial priority to the projects that directly benefit residents and table those that don't until the economy improves. In closing, again, I'd like to commend Dr. Youssef, not only for this project, but also for his everyday accessibility to anyone with a question or a problem. He always has an open door. Thank you also to the other city employees with whom I've had contact. Your courtesy and accessibility are also much appreciated. And not last, she is last, but not least, I applaud Diana Dobert's Community Services for their amazing, amazing contributions to the residents of this city, particularly elderly ones. Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention tonight and be safe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. At this time, if anybody else would like to speak, just please raise your hand. I have Jody Boyd who would like to speak. And again, this is just a reminder, if you're speaking on public hearing, you have to wait for the public hearing item. This would not be the appropriate time to speak for the public hearing. Again, Jody Boyd.
Hi, everybody. This is Jody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to also speak on Steve Sheldon. And I'm increasingly uncomfortable and concerned about what I'm hearing about his behavior. Of course, the resignation of Kelly and Associates. The fact that we are still doing business with him after he repeatedly lied to the city council at city council meetings regarding the funding commitment for parking from Coastline College. And obviously, he is an unsavory character, and I'm mystified as to why the city continues to do business with him when we should have shown him the door. He's not of the honesty and caliber that we want to be working with. I'm also concerned, and I'm going to preface this by saying that I have a great deal of respect for Van Tran. I do know who he is and everything that he has done for the Vietnamese-American community, both locally and in Sacramento. And he literally put Little Saigon on the map, and we have him to thank for the Little Saigon signs that are on the four oh five and the twenty-two freeway. That said, though, I am, I have a growing concern of his continued reach and potential conflicts of interest. He is representing David Voe regarding the nightclub. He has represented the mayor and council members Ho and Wen during the recall. And now I understand that he is a consultant or has a role with Steve Sheldon and has also participated in a recent meeting with the city, between the city and Steve Sheldon. So I'm not really sure what's going on behind the scenes, but I think something's not right. And I again urge the city to cut ties with Steve Sheldon. And let's focus on more transparency and honesty and building a future for the city and all of the residents that we can all be proud of down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And next speaker, Connie Nguyen. Hi, Connie.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, were you going to speak on, on the public hearing item or just generic?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just wait. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. And then Lan Kwak, when, I assume you're going to wait for the public hearing as well?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, then, okay, then I, I don't have any additional speakers, mayor.
All right, thank you so much. And if we don't have any speaker for this, oral communication, so I'd like to close oral communication. Next, we have consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion.
Excuse me, mayor, can I, can I request to pull item three point six for a conversation later?
All right, so council member Menzo for three point six. May I have motion to approve the rest of the ballot?
I motion to approve consent calendar.
Okay, so council member Menzo approved consent calendar, but item three point six.
I second, I second that, but there is just a minor error. I don't know whether it's, is that important to fix. But in the meeting minutes for the one PM on December twenty-first, my name is misspelled, so I don't know whether we need to do that, but I second it.
Okay, so.
We can revise that.
Yeah, City Clerk, we revise that. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
And that's a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for item three point six. That was made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. So vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so item three point six, CityNet homeless services. That's for report. November twenty twenty. Made by Chief of Police.
Good evening, council. This item three point six is actually going to be discussed in our presentation tonight. Reference the November dashboard for CityNet. If you, if you'd like, we can do the presentation, and any questions that come up with that, we can answer that during the presentation. Or if there was something specific you would like to discuss on this item, we'd be able to answer those questions right now for you.
I just, after, after your presentation, I just wanted to see if there any action can be taken or direction. But I would like to wait till after your presentation.
All right, so this item.
So we need a motion on three point six, then?
Yeah, I think we need a motion to receive and file that they, the item.
Okay, make a motion to receive and file.
Okay, second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Doe to receive and file. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, next we have public hearings. May I have our city attorney to explain this item?
First, let's announce the item. Why don't you read the rules?
Okay, let me announce item. All right, so the item is four point one, case number twenty nineteen dot two thirty-nine. City Council Review of the Planning Commission. City council review of the planning commission approval of case number 2019-239 involving two conditional use permit to operate a nightclub banquet facility as defined by Westminster Municipal Court, chapter 17.700. And number two, to offer onsite sale of and consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirit. And then administrative use permit to allow a shared parking between onsite commercial uses pursuant to Westminster Municipal Court, Share parking in lieu of providing additional onsite parking spaces located at 14190 Beach Boulevard in City Westminster.
Excuse me. After speaking with the city attorneys, it appears that I would need to recuse myself from participating in this public hearing because I have already rendered an opinion on this case when I served on the planning commission. And so according to the advice of city attorneys, I need to recuse myself.
All right. Is there, councilmember Ho, do you have any comments?
Yes, yes, I would like to also recuse myself from this hearing tonight because I'm currently retaining an attorney to help me on private matter. And that same attorney was until recently also being retained by Vietnamese. And I heard recently that this attorney had completely withdrawn himself from any involvement with Vietnamese business in this application. But still, since I am still using him in my private matter, I think it would be best for me to recuse myself from this hearing tonight.
All right, and I am also going to recuse myself from participating in this public hearing for two reasons. First, I hired the same attorney to help me during the recall election last year. But the presentation ended last June, so he is no longer working for me. I also heard that he no longer represent Vietnamese. So the city attorney office told me that I could participate in this hearing if I wanted to because there is no financial or other conflict involved. Let me state for the record that I do not have any financial interest in this case. And I believe that I'm fair and impartial. However, just to be safe, I think it's best to recuse myself to avoid speculation. Let me also mention that I owe property with a onshore 1,000 feet away from the property life of the Vietnamese business on the other side of Beach Boulevard and the residential street. I asked the city attorney office about the situation to see if there were any conflict based on my ownership. And according to FPPC regulation, the city attorney determined that it is very unlikely this decision would have any foreseeable material financial effect on my property interest. It is because Vietnamese business is located on the other side of the streets. Beach Boulevard, which is a major highway and probably the biggest and busiest highway in the city. Beach Boulevard already contain a lot of traffic, noise, and commercial activity. In addition, it's significant that there is already an assistant nightclub in the area conducting the same type of activities. So it's really hard to see how this application would have any additional impact on my property. So the city attorney explained to me that he did not think there was any conflict in either situation. However, as I stated, I have decided to recuse myself from this case to be more caution and to avoid any speculation. Anyone else?
Any other comments?
I, this is Vice Mayor Nguyen. I will be participating in this hearing tonight. I have seen no reason for why that I have to recuse myself. I have consulted with the city attorney in a few situations. And he determined that I do not have any conflicts of interest. So I will be participating in this hearing tonight. I do want to state, however, that I also previously hired the same attorney to help me during the recall. But that representation ended last year. And he no longer represent the Vietnamese business, so there is no conflict. I also want to mention that I previously spoke on behalf of Vietnamese a couple of years ago during a planning commission meeting long before I was on the city council. But that was for a completely different application than what is before us tonight. So there's no, there's no connection between the two. Finally, I want to make it clear that I have no financial interest or no financial connection to this business. And I can confidently state that I will listen to all the facts and will be fair and impartial in rendering a decision tonight. That's it.
City attorney?
Yes, is there any other comments before I?
Well, I have a question for councilman and Vice Mayor Nguyen. Is Vietnamese magazine Miss David Ba is a good friend and a major campaign as a contributor to your supporter in your campaign?
I know him. I know him just like everybody else. But if you say close fan, I don't know what you define by close fans. But I did, I did tell you that previously I spoke on behalf of Vietnamese, but that was a long, long time ago, which is, I mean, a couple of years ago when I wasn't on the city council.
So have you received monetary contribution to your campaign from Miss David Ba?
Let me clarify that under, under FPPC regulations, campaign contributions do not count as income. I don't know if there's been any here, but just to be clear, that's not treated the same as any other money that's received. Campaign contributions, the legislature has defined it that way.
Okay, well, what about entire contribution?
Well, other, other money would be treated differently. But so we have a, so right now, the situation is we have two councilmembers that are ready to participate. And we have three that have declared a conflict. The applicant is entitled to due process. And that means that we, in order to have this hearing go forward, we need at least three people to participate. And since we have three individuals that declared a conflict, what the state law says is that you would then follow a random drawing process, or it's called legally required participation. Legally, in order to make a decision, we have to have at least three people. And so the state law says that as long as you do a random drawing of the individuals with the conflict, and there's no influence on that, then whoever is selected at random can participate. And you can continue doing that until you have three people. So in this case, we have two already, and we need one more. So we would need to do a random draw here. So I kind of prepared, I wasn't sure how many we have here, but. I'm going to mark, mark one of the numbers here. Okay, and so I haven't shown this to anybody, but I'm going to hold this up here. I've got one, two, and three. So the three councilmembers that have declared a conflict, we should each pick a number. One of those numbers has an X. That would be the person that at random would be selected. So if we could start with the mayor as the most senior, you want to pick a number?
Number one.
Number one. All right, councilmember Kimberly Ho.
Who?
Okay, and councilmember Manzo would be three then. Okay, all right, so looking at the numbers here. This is the one with the X. That was number two. So it would be councilmember Ho. Again, just show this to be clear, it's just number two. All right, so with respect to the other two councilmembers, we would mute them, and they will not participate in this proceeding in any way. But then we'll proceed with councilmember Nguyen, councilmember Do, and councilmember Ho on this public hearing. So city clerk, if you could proceed to mute, mute the other two. And you can turn their video off. They can continue to observe, but not participate in any way.
Okay, they're muted.
Okay, probably should turn their video off too. Because we don't want to influence the decision in any way. They can observe, but not influence.
Yeah, let me, let me get there for a second. Let's stop video.
Okay, and also I should mention that since the mayor is not participating, then the vice mayor would take over as the chair for purposes of this hearing.
Thank you very much. Do the city clerk need to read the rules regulation for a public hearing?
Yes, I was about to say that. Yes, could you read that?
Okay.
The only, the only thing that I usually state is that due to COVID-19 restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. We've allowed members of the public to admit ecomments up to 24 hours prior to the meeting. And any speaker wishing to speak tonight verbally to address the council will get five minutes to speak.
Okay. Did I ask the clerk to turn my video on because I'm participating?
Sorry, I think that. Did it work? There you go.
So you finished reading the rule? Okay, so with the mayor being recused, I will be conducting the meeting on behalf of, for the item 4.1. Maybe I go ahead and read the case number again, the subject matter. It's a case number 2019-239. City council reviewed of the planning commission's approval of case number 2019-239 involving two conditional use permit, CPUs. The first one is to operate the nightclub banquet facility as defined by Westminster Municipal Court, chapter 17.700, which is definitions and specialized terms. And two, to offer onsite sales and consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirit. Alcohol beverage control license type 48. And administrative use permit, AUP, to allow for shared parking between the onsite commercial use pursuant to Westminster Municipal Court, section 17.320.026B. Share parking in lieu of providing additional onsite parking spaces located at 14190 Beach Boulevard, Westminster, California, 92683. So at this point here, I'd like to ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. We have a number of staff that are here to assist with this item this evening, including responding to questions you may have. Our planning manager, Steve Ratke, Adolfo Zeta, in his capacity as the transportation manager, and also Detective Kyle Seesock from our police department. And Miss Andy Kim, our associate planner, is going to be delivering our staff report tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your introduction of the project. I'm going to share my screen, so give me a second. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor. Thank you again, councilmembers. This presentation is provided for you for the plan commission review of case number 2019-239, project located at 14190 Beach Boulevard. The project site is located on northeast corner of Beach and 13th Street. The project site is developed with a commercial building, which includes Sam Ash Music Store and Vietnamese media. And is surrounded by other professional and government buildings to the north and to the east. An existing nightclub entertainment use is also located north of the project site. To the south are multifamily residential and commercial uses. The product site is located in a C2 general business learning district and is surrounded by other local commercial office and office uses in C1 zone to the north, to the south, east, and to the west. West is across the street from the Beach Boulevard, which is not shown. The civic center is located on the east side of the project site in the public semi-public zone as shown in green. Our five multifamily residential zone is also located on the south side of the project site across 13th Street. The project consists of two CUPs for a new, for a new nightclub banquet facility and to offer onsite sale and consumption of alcohol beverages, specifically ABC license type 48. The floor plan is divided into three uses. As you could see, the main is the nightclub slash banquet facility. The second area is existing media facility. And a common area, which is located on the bottom in a green shaded area, consists of restaurants and emergency access. Planning case number 2019-239 also includes administrative use permit to allow shared parking agreement between existing onsite commercial uses. The project site is located on the commercial, located in the, in a commercial building with a total of 122 off-street parking spaces on site. There are currently 93 parking spaces in front of the commercial building and 29 parking spaces are located in the back of the building. After the public, public hearing notices were mailed to all property owners of record and occupants within a 500-foot radius of the project site, the planning commission considered the case number 2019-239 on October 21st, 2020. After the public hearing was closed and following deliberation, the planning commission voted 3-2 to approve the project, subject to conditions of approval. On November 5th, 2020, councilmember Do requested a review of the planning commission's decision to approve the project. As a result, a public hearing was scheduled for the mayor and councils, and councils of consideration. Planning commission's recommendation is to uphold the planning commission's decision. However, the mayor and the city council or the council may consider modifying or overturning the planning commission's approval. This concludes my presentation for case number 2019-239. I could answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, staff, for the report. Now, I would like to invite councilmember Thai, since you are the one who brought it back for the council to review the case. May I ask you to go ahead and make your points?
I think you're muted.
Councilmember Thai, can you hear us?
Yes, okay, sorry. Okay, I just unmuted myself. So pursuant to Section 17.640.015 of the Westminster Municipal Code, as a councilmember, I'm here initiating a review of the Planning Commission approval of Case Number 2019 dash 239. The address is 14190 Beach Boulevard on October 21st of 2020 because of the following reasons. Okay, this is Mr. David Boss' second application to serve alcohol at this location. The first one was denied in 2017, and I'm sure Vice Mayor Charlie Nguyen was involved with that due to oversaturation of liquor license in this high-crime area. The proposed nightclub site is literally just across from the shared parking, it's accessible by Blair Restaurant and Dancing. The staff report indicated as approximately about 90 feet distant between the two establishments. There are parking spaces in Blair Parking Lot, just about 15, 20 feet from the front door of 14190 Beach property. There are significant concern about parking, loitering, including smoking outside, parking nuisance, and other crimes against person and property. In term, in term of parking, Blair have already experienced people illegally parked in their parking lot when the applicant hosts a large event. With a stated maximum capacity of 366 people, the parking requirement for this proposed establishment is only about 55 spaces. So one parking for every hundred, 100 feet, which come out to about a seven per vehicle. In reality, you know, people arrive to this establishment strictly one to four patron in them. The business Sam Ash open until 9:00 PM, the lack of enough parking space is, is obvious. Where will the 366 guests and their 125 or 175-plus vehicles gonna park? Parking ordinance of the Westminster Municipal Code, Section 17.320.020 only, only require 55 stalls based on this type of use and the size of property, which is not realistic. The parking study the applicant submitted, look at the, the peak usage on the weekend before Thanksgiving last year, which is not true, another true representation of peak parking throughout the year. In term of crime, why we would even consider allowing two competing nightclub right next to each other in such a high-crime area? Per the Westminster Police Department, this location is such a high-crime area, just as was back in 2017. The crime count for this area is about 32% higher than average. The Westminster Police Department report attached to the agenda package stated, based on the fact that both of these nightclub will be sharing the same parking area, there are numerous possible police-related concern, one of which relates to the response-tactical challenges for the Westminster Police Department. Liquor license, alcohol, ABC alcohol beverage control license type 47. Just, just this type of license authorized to sell wine, beer, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises. Miners are not allowed to enter and remain on the property. With an ABC type 48 license, minors are not allowed to enter the premises for, for the magazine business and the TV show taping operation during the day for this particular establishment. With the ABC type license type 48, minors are not allowed to enter the premises to attend wedding and banquet. So talking about this facility being a family-oriented establishment with this type of 48 liquor license is not realistic. The applicant, applicant stated, this will be a family-oriented banquet hall and not a nightclub environment. Does that, is that gonna violate ABC license type 48? I think it is. And who will enforce the ABC license type 48 violation? It's gonna be the code enforcement from the police department, or the police department. And how many ABC type 48 license do we have in the city? After talking to staff and reading the staff report, we, I know that there's six. Okay, and, and all these, six of these establishments, which having the type 48 ABC liquor license is strictly barred. And, and one of the, one of those was the, the library gentleman strip clubs. Talk about noise and south roofing. The building is originally a furniture store, if I remember correctly, it's a Korean furniture store, Korean-based furniture store, and then become a magazine business and then TV studio. It was not built for nightclub use. Is the building southproofed for nightclub use? The entry to our door, a class, we would not block ourselves. Is that code enforcement required for south roofing a nightclub building? This, this also is a risk of public health and safety, okay? The property is located on a very busy thoroughfare, Beach Boulevard. Two nightclub establishments sharing the same general parking area and operate until 2:00 AM with patron drinking alcohol and will represent in the health and safety risk to the community. There will be increase in DUI, traffic accident, public disturbance, noise, and outside lawyering due to smoking. And most definitely respond, it's gonna be a respond challenges for the police department. And, and my, my concern with this decision from the planning department is, is obviously it's violated a type 48 liquor license. And the, the Planning Commission went ahead and approved it anyway. And it caused me, I'm very, it's very disturbing and very alarming, there's a huge public safety issue involved and, and obviously a violation of law for the ABC license type 48. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe, for your presentation. At this point here, I would like to invite all councilmembers, if you have any question for staff on this project, or anything about the staff report.
Okay, I have, I have a question for, I have a question on the police department. Okay, look at the crime report, so basically it's, it's it's a report, it's a DAS statistic of crimes. But the, is, is it customary for the police department not making a recommendation as to the Planning Commission to approve or not approve a licensing of permits? Can anybody answer the questions?
This is Kyle Seesock here. The police department has moved away from the recommendation portion of it and has gone based on stats and licensing and saturation alone, along with conditions that we've requested if approved.
Okay, and Officer Seesock, since when that the, the, the police department adopt that, that practice?
It's been in practice probably almost a year now, six months to a year.
Okay, and, and what caused the police department to adopt that type of approach when providing crime statistics report to assist the Planning Commission?
It was something that was discussed and I don't know exactly where it came from, it was just passed down to me.
Okay, but was there any circumstances in the past where the police department make recommendation not to approve any type of licensing of permit due to crime stats or safety concern?
In the past, yes, we did.
Okay, do we have such an example?
I can't remember one off the top of my head, but I know from past experience that if it met both oversaturation and high crime, then in theory, we would be opposed to it, based on those two instances alone.
Okay, but how come we are not, the, the police department, we're not making recommendations during this particular permit, the licensing, when high crime statistics indicate that that the PD should make a recommendation?
Again, that was an organizational decision, I did not have any input into that.
Okay, so the so, look, so recently, and is that, is that, is that, is that a memo, is that an order from the police department that adopt that kind of practice, or it's just a verbal decision?
It was passed down to me verbally, yes.
Okay, by who?
It came down to me through the detective commander.
Okay. And who might that be?
That's Commander Vandergrift.
Okay, so from now on, all of the police crime statistics report will, will be provided to assist the Planning Commission to make a decision whether or not they're gonna approve a permit or licensing. But the PD will not make recommendation whether or not the permission be approved or not approved, is that correct?
For the foreseeable future, as far as I've been told, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, so, okay, so is that possibility is gonna be changed later? Since it's just a verbal order?
Again, that's a question that would be asked to someone other than myself in a higher position.
Okay. Oh, thank you very much, sir. I don't have anything further. I'd like to move, make a motion for the City Council not to approve this.
Yes, it's not, it's not yet.
We have to finish.
That's right. At this point here, I want to ask to see if any other councilmember have any question for the staff. And if not, I would like to invite the applicant or their representative to speak. And tonight, I believe that, as mentioned earlier, from from our CD plot, which is Land Cookwind, is going to be a representative for David Barr, which is the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct, so let me, if it's council's wish for him to, to speak, then I will bring him over to the panelist or unmute him for a second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, it looks like Councilmember Ho is wanting to speak.
Oh, okay. Then let's stop, let's stop bringing them in right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Ho, can we?
I think she's muted.
Can you hear from you?
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so well, I'm I thought I was going to recuse myself really, and I didn't know I was to, but I'm glad I read up on the case.
Councilmember? Let me, let me just jump in briefly because we want to be careful, we follow the public hearing process. Before the council has meaningful discussion about what are the positives and the negatives of this, it's really important that we, we allow the public to speak, we allow the applicant to speak. Councilmember Doe was, went first because he was the one who initiated the review of this decision.
So I think You're asking if I have any questions to, for staff, correct?
Yeah, if there's specific questions, not really comments, but I just want to make sure.
I get it.
Like unique clarification on something.
I, I do, and, and yes, I do, I made some notes of that. I just wanted to, to ask regarding, I think back in 2017, Councilmember Doe wrote that the first request was denied, or the first hearing was denied for a liquor license back in 2017. And back then, I seem to remember that I was reading up on this case was that there was a lot of mix-up between the parking lot of the blue car parking lot and Vietnamese parking lot. They don't have shared parking lot, so there's a lot of mix-up between information that you have for Vietnamese and Vietnamese only. I, I don't know what the reason might have been back then, if you remember, Chief, a lot of back, if you were here that long, and if you remember, could you comment?
Good evening, yes, I was here, but I wasn't involved in the, in the process at the time. I was involved in, in the review this time. And if I could address some of the comments and answers that Detective Seesock gave regarding Councilmember Doe's questions. The, the change in what happened last time to this time was the rules with ABC changed. There was such a big gap in when the first, the first applicant was denied to this time. In reviewing the process, the ABC license changed the guidelines. Before, it used to be a larger number of crime, of police response, and a larger timeframe. And what happened was the, the requirements changed and it shortened the timeframe to down to two years. And it shortened and lessened the types of crimes that we could report in order for it to be a high-crime area. When the police department reviews an application moving forward, the police department isn't in the business of telling people they can't have free enterprise and do a business as long as it's legal and it falls within those guidelines, and that's my stance as a police chief. If those stats showed that it was a high-crime area, if there was something that was going to prevent police department from responding to a location to render aid, prevent a crime, or to handle a 911 call, those would be taken into consideration as well. In this instance, none of that applied now that the rules had been changed on us. So moving forward, the police department was not gonna render a decision to not allow somebody to open a legal business that fell within the guidelines that ABC was asking for. Now, falling in the guidelines, the police just give the stats and the record and, and, and the information to the Planning Commission, which, which makes their decision based on the information that we give. If Planning Commission does make the approval to move forward, to move it to council for a decision, we asked some things in there that would help us in law enforcement to identify perpetrators of a crime, like security cameras, security guards, lighting, lighting in the parking lot, and, and those types of things. We would be more on the enforcement side of the CUP if it falls within side those guidelines. If it falls outside of those guidelines, like say the number of, of ABC establishments are oversaturation, well, of course, we wouldn't want that because that wouldn't be, be good for the neighborhood. But it, it wasn't, it fell within. The crimes that were supposed to be documented, it, it, it didn't, the numbers weren't large enough for us to get to ABC, to ABC to deny the license. But if it did, those would be some of the recommendations where we would say, yeah, you know, as a law enforcement agency and, and, and the people who provide public safety to the citizens of Westminster, this probably isn't gonna be a good idea. And that would be our recommendation. But in this case, since the things had changed since the first time, and then I became chief and, and reviewed it and looked into it and did a lot of homework on it, it just wasn't in an area where the police should be making a recommendation to tell a business that didn't fall outside those guidelines that we're going to be opposed to it. As a police department, I have the utmost faith in our officers that they will be able to handle a situation that goes on there if, in fact, we are called there for something. So I hope that gives a little bit more clarity to, to everything. And, you know, if there's any other questions like that that you have, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer. But I just want to get some clarity to what, what Detective Seesock had brought forth and, and also answer your question that, yes, I was here, but I wasn't involved in it at that time to make a recommendation of, of denial.
Okay. Okay, that's pretty clear, thank you.
Okay. So last call.
Thank you.
Last call for councilmembers, do you have any question for staff?
Can I have a follow-up question with the chief, a lot of that?
Chief, go ahead, please.
Well, thank you for making the clarification, was I have, okay, so basically 2017, the PD did make a recommendation not to approve the license for Mr. David Barr, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Yes, okay, so since then, the law, the ABC law has changed, and so the PD changes the. Um of. Not making any recommendation except as providing crime stats, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so have you, uh have you made a policy change? Have you, is there a written policy change? Within the uh PD, the police department, uh so that we have a uniform approach to. Support the planning commission to making such a decision, um you have such a policy, right?
Well, no, that wouldn't be a policy per se because it's falling in the guidelines of ABC requirements. So we would have to, to fall within the guidelines that ABC is asking for the stats, and in this case, it, it fell within the guidelines.
Okay, so you just follow the guideline of ABC and there's no written, uh written policy that, that authorized detective. Uh will buy crime stat to support the plan, planning commission and the council uh to make a decision on licensing. Is that a fair statement?
Well, no, that's, that's not a fair statement because again, we wouldn't be making a policy on it, that's what the planning commission would be for the question and answer. If it fell with, within the high crime stat or within the oversaturation, then of course, we would be making a recommendation that this might not be a good idea. But it would ultimately come down to the planning commission. We would provide them with the information to make an informed decision, but we would not be telling them how to vote.
Ever.
We would make the recommendation on, on our, our uh stats.
So it's okay, so the recommendation, basically, uh you should approve or you should not approve, so is that correct? Is that what, what it is?
Well, no, we wouldn't be telling them to approve or not approve, we would just be providing them the numbers that, and this is just an example. If it said you can only have seven establishments and this would be the eighth establishment, we would bring that to their attention. For an informed decision-making.
Then, you know, I, I, I have nothing of my respect for you, you and the men, women in Westminster PD. I just wanted the public to understand that we would have a uniform approach in term of approving. Licensing of permit, so that, that, you know, it's, it's, you do everything correct, follow the laws. And you will get what you want, you don't have to know anybody, okay, you understand what I mean, so I just.
Absolutely, and that's what we did in this case.
Okay, so, okay, um so will there be any uh written policy? So that the, the, the verbal uh command will not be. Uh use instead of, you know, hey, hey, this is the policy written right here. If you follow this guideline, you go this direction, if it doesn't follow the guideline, you go this direction.
Uh well, if, if it fell outside of the guidelines, the, you know, we would default to saying, letting. Uh the planning commission know that, yeah, there's a high crime saturation, there's this. And obviously, if it was high, ABC wouldn't be approving the license anyways, so I don't even know if we'd be having that discussion. Uh in this, in this instance, everything fell within those guidelines and it fell within ABC's requirements, so it'd be very difficult for us. To not, or, or to have a voice to say, yeah, business like this shouldn't go in here.
Appreciate it, chief.
Okay, I guess, I guess that all uh council member questions for their staff. Um city clerk, will you please go ahead and bring the applicant or representative to speak?
Yes, give me just a second. At this time, I will allow. Lam Kwakwin, are you with us?
And, and if we could just formally open the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Uh yes, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
That, thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Mayor Nguyen, council members uh. And the city staff, uh my name's Lam Kwakwin, I'm the attorney for the application. David Bo, uh first of all, I thank you the staff for working out the report, not only now, but. Since the planning commission states and you had done a very expert job and very detailed, very meticulous. In addressing all the issues in this case. Uh having said that, I just want to bring to the attention of everyone that, that the, the, the report itself and the staff have been. Everyone have been talking about the nightclub and banquet thing, but I think in view nature of the model, the business here. It's not really the banquet or the nightclub. Uh what Mr. Bo planned to do, we do, we do only expand his business with, with how he has been doing for. For years now, and with es- expand the entertainment uh, the facility. But now, he wants to do uh just, just a little bit more for the banquet hall, for the special event facility. A type of thing, and what he has been doing, what he's continued to do, eh. To create a, a play for the community events, a play for the family oriented. Celebration then, for the private organization meeting and mostly it's. Center around the community traditional cultural event at this location here. And like I said, it's not a nightclub, it's not a bar, it's not a dancing facility. As a competitor who should happen to be the next door here, uh it's not what he's doing. And what he, he does is, he, he, this is, he doesn't intend to compete, and I don't know where. The, the neighbor perceive some sort of competi- competition. He doesn't compete because uh his clientele are different, they are very family-oriented, community civic. Members, organization come together, they celebrate on weekend, uh uh. Uh at their organizational event, at an annual, those are the type of activity that. He, he wished to, to continue on. The only thing that different from. On what he has been doing is the addition of the liquor license, that's about the only thing that he add to. The operation he has for this event, so I'd like to have the staff to kind of move away from the reference to. The, the nightclub or bar because that's not what he intend to do. This is, uh because it is esp- expansion of the, the existing facility. And he has, you know, he had a very kind, nice and cleaning, clean uh record there, it's. The record speak by itself, that from the report, the staff indicate, there's only two call for, for the police. And one of them is for this civil, I don't know what is civil meaning this case, but it's not criminal in nature. So have been operated at a set of record, it's be good, uh uh nice record for, for. For this uh visit operator here, for the entertainment here. So this is much different from the nightclub and bar next door here, the Blues, that council. Member Doe has keep mentioning, that really, that's the one that generate the crime stat. For this uh police district here, that's the way that it, they create all kind trouble in this neighborhood. In fact, there was some sort of homicide shooting or something at that location, that is where it is. Uh that create a problem in this neighborhood, and speaking of this, because it. Mr. Ball apply for the license type forty-eight. This is allowed for that activity, but the Blue, they got only license for the type forty-seven. What is, they're not allowed to open a nightclub or the bar in, in, in that location. So the, the neighbor there, the one that make up the main opposition, that about the only opposition to this project. Either one that violate the law every day in and out, and this, I want to bring this to the attention of the police and the staff. To look into the operation of that Blues uh operation there. This application for the Orange County Entertainment has been vetted by the staff from day one and they now. Uh the, the application has certified, met and in many cases exceeded all. The requirement for the project, there is no legitimate issue raised from the staff or the concerned citizen. Other than the reference to the nightclub and the bar. That or the, the neighbor that perceive some sort of competition, but I don't know. How they got the idea of the competition there because my client, Mr. Ball. Engaged in catering to the different crowd, different clientele, different group of people, they're not the people who go out at night. Bring alcohol or dancing all night type of thing, that, that, this, this, this facility is not for that. And the condition is mentioned in the staff report has been certified and as reported. From the resolution from the planning commission, and for that, I urge the city council today. To affirm the recommendation, affirm the ruling from the planning commission from last October. I wanna here to address a number of issues that the staff uh uh that Mr. Doe. Or the opposition raised here about a parking, in this report itself, the application has more than enough. Parking space that basically on the law, the code, the requirement, and, and he doesn't need to do more than that, he had done more. And required uh by law, the crime stack is just, as is, the stat is just the number. But we have to look into where's those that come from, who caused it, who created that, who originated that? That's why we're looking at that, whether it's here, where, where my, uh my client has no record of that. Or the neighbor want to generate all those uh stat there. Before I conclude, I wanna add to council, it possible to allow or to amend condition fifteen. With a, with prohibit any person under twenty-one to be inside a facility at any time after six P M. So the problem with the proposed resolution on the condition fifteen, uh it does, because this one. Facility cater to event, some sort of family event, community event, it, it's civic event. Uh so eventually, yeah, more than likely, we should still have some people under twenty-one. Who come with their organization, who come with their family, who come to the wedding, who come to the cultural show here. So we can't really keep them out of those event, just because it happened to be after six P M. So it's very important, very critical for, for the client to operate this facility successfully. The city should allow, uh the, they allow the, the people under age. Uh under twenty-one to be present in this facility because that's what they have been going, this is the place. I offer that to change that condition, I offer that the city will amend the condition to add only one face would say. The, to the effect that the, the people under twenty-one can be present if liquor is being served. And not accompanied by, by adult, that solve the issue concern with the city. If uh liquor is being served to the minor because if the people under twenty-one come with their family. Come with the organization, the community leader, they should be able to participate in this well-rounded. Well-meaning or family-oriented event, it shouldn't be kept out just because. Someone can serve uh liquor here, it's just like our family have go to the wedding. And this, there's no reason to keep a kid out, just because the family had a traditional event. Or the organizational, or the scout meeting, I'm sorry, scout don't drink alcohol, I apologize. Uh some, some, some other uh community group will, will participate, so it's difficult to keep out. Uh the, the people under twenty-one, and there's no, no reason, no basis for that, and I urge the council. If possible, amend condition fifteen to allow uh. The minor to be present in different premises after uh six P M. Uh with the condition that if they can be in here, if uh, or they can be kept out if. Lot, liquor is being served and they're not accompanied uh by, by an adult. And I wanna correct uh council member Doe on a reference of minor being in this facility. Because the ABC uh requirement on the law only prohibit people under twenty-one to come to the bar. Where alcohol is a main operation, a main ingredient there. It does not prohibit those people to come into for the show before six P M. You should participate in the event where they not allowed to consume alcohol. So that is, there's a correction there, though, the statement uh from the council member Doe is it not correct in that regard. And for that, I can conclude my statement, I mean, I want to again thank the staff and the police department and the council. Member to, to consider this application and I urge you to. Approve, affirm the planning commission uh recommendation or report with the amendment. Uh to condition fifteen, and that conclude my statement.
Okay, as I uh officially open public hearings, uh at this point, I'd like to ask for city clerk to have um. Do you have any e-commerce or any speakers want to talk, uh speak?
Thank you, sir, I absolutely have.
Can I have a question with the uh lawyer, Nguyen?
I guess that, that will come, that, that will come after, right?
Yes, that comes after the e-commerce. Or all the comments.
Actually, since he, since he is available right now, it would be probably a good idea to ask him a question right now.
Okay.
Calling him back is more difficult, I think it's better to do it when the person is up, right?
Okay. Go ahead, council member.
Uh. Is he uh on?
Yes.
Okay, well. Um, Mr. Nguyen, let me ask you, uh have you ever read the uh ABC type forty-eight? Law verbatim from the ABC uh website, have you ever read it?
I have.
Okay, uh do you have it in front of you?
Not here with me handy, no.
Okay, Christian, you have the uh, the uh, the definition of type forty-eight ABC? Uh I don't have it, I could, I could look it up. Okay, I have it, but you know, I think it's, it's reasonable for you to read it, but we will have no dispute whether or not it's a state law or not. So Mr. Nguyen, you have, uh you have read uh ABC, the definition of ABC license type forty-eight, right?
Yes.
Okay, have you read the ABC license type forty-seven?
Yes, I have too, also.
Okay, do you know, you, you uh, on the top of your head, uh can you tell the difference between those two?
Forty-seven is for the restaurant and bar. That is for the ru- restaurant to serve uh alcohol incidental to serving food there. Forty-eight is allow alcohol, sort of nightclub bar, that's what, that, mostly that's what you do. And food is incidental to serving alcohol there, so there's a difference there. So based on the definition, if you refer to my statement of the Blues operation, they are not in compliance with the law. Under the type forty-seven, which is now they have.
Okay, so type forty-eight, what about, what about type forty-eight, what do you know about type forty-eight ABC license?
Sort of allow uh the operator to serve alcohol, it's a man uh.
Okay, anything else?
There's a lot of thing, but I don't know what we referring to.
So you're not up to your uh, your law, right? Is that a fair statement?
Not really, I don't know what you're trying to get at. Uh I, it's probably what it is, I, I can tell, I know what it is, but I can't recite. On the verbatim or the language of law here.
Mr. City Attorney, Deputy City Attorney, uh would you be so kind, read the uh ABC. Definition of type forty-eight liquor license?
It says type forty-eight on sale general, public premises, a bar nightclub. Authorizes the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises where sold, period. It authorizes the sale of beer and, or wine, excuse me, and wine for consumption off the premises where sold, period. Minors are not allowed to enter and remain, see section twenty-five, six-six, three-point-five for exception and musicians. Food service is not required.
Okay, so basically type forty-eight, it say specifically. Okay, so basically type forty-eight, it say specifically minor are not allowed. There's some exception musician underage, they can come in and perform. And then they have to leave. They cannot stay in there. Okay? And you asking the city to approve a permit, okay, with type forty-eight license, where it says specifically minors not allowed. I I can I can understand that that you trying to present your client that he trying to open a family-oriented establishment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there will be minor uh people under twenty-one years old entering that establishment. But according to A B C liquor license law, basically you cannot do that. And the city is not in the position to override a state law, especially on that particular liquor license. They have many, many different type of liquor license. Do you you understand what I mean, right?
I understand that.
But what you telling us to, what you telling us is to override a state law and allow your client to have a license over in a business with with a uh with disregard to the A B C law at all. Okay, and so you know, without the condition fifteen, I mean, according to A B C type forty-eight, it's it's it's, you know, the city attorney just read it, minor are not allowed to enter and remain at any time. Okay, have you ever have any experience operating or working with any um establishment to have a type forty-eight liquor license?
I have, and here's a here's the correction, the clarification. The fifteen fifteen and uh condition fifteen right now is written. It does not allow minor to be in this locate in that premises under six P M, period. That does not work, okay? Sometime they have event after six P M, but they don't serve alcohol. Sometime they serve wine, it's not liquor up as allowed by type forty-eight. So just like event where the restaurant, they 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 hold a banquet or the family wedding, kid can be in there. That is the condition I'm talking about. And minor, when they sit, go in with their parent. Of course, their parent and adult must supervise them, do not allow them uh to consume alcohol. That is a specific condition I'm referring to.
Okay, so you you.
For this operation to work. And they cannot rule out minor at all time six P M. That's what is what condition fifteen is been written right now.
Okay, the planning commission making a mistake. Okay, for lack of understanding of the law. Type forty-eight does not allow any minor to enter that establishment at any time, except the condition, exception listed right there. Okay, so I'm sorry, but you have mistaken of the law. We, the city council, cannot approve or override state law. Period. Okay, I'm trying, we if we do this, we on a violation of law. We cannot allow, okay, yeah, I know, I appreciate your honest intention. I I understand that you you try to represent your client to open, expand your business. You mentioned that. I know I'm awful. I'm pro pro business, okay? But the way that you presented with the type of liquor license that you are having or planning to have, it doesn't work with this type of establishment. Okay, and I don't think that you understand this. Okay, can I have a clarification with the city attorney?
Yeah, I I don't know that I have a definitive answer on that. It does say that minors are not supposed to be on the premises. Um, so that would be something, whether what he's suggesting is that during hours when they are not serving alcohol at all, can they be present? That's one question. Um, that's 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 question we'd have to look into. Because it does generally say that when you have a forty-eight, you're not supposed to have individuals under twenty-one present. So I'm not sure if there's exceptions for that when you're not serving. And in this case, the application is not serving alcohol, say, for instance, during the daytime when they're operating the facility, uh, not as a banquet facility. So I'm not sure about that. The second part is, uh, he mentioned, it sounds as though what he was saying is that can they serve alcohol and still allow minors in situations where there's an adult supervising them? That would seem to be problematic. Uh, because in that situation, I think the law does say you cannot have minors with a type forty-eight. So, but again, this is something I'd have to research further.
Okay, Mr. Wayne, I'm I'm I thank you. I thank Christian. Appreciate it. I see attorney. Okay, I'm 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 just trying to save your you and your client time and effort here. Because what you're doing, you're asking the city to override A B C, which is a state law. And we have no jurisdiction doing that, period. Okay, this is, this is. We have to understand the law. And apparently, I think in your position, you uh you have trouble understanding the A B C law. And you need to follow up with, you don't have to believe what I say. Call A B C and ask them. Okay, I talked to A B C. Okay, I enforced the law for a quarter century for twenty-five years. I did bar check. I understand. I know how to read the law. Okay, I'm just trying to help you that, you know, why can't you get a forty-seven license instead of forty-eight? Okay, if you have forty-seven license, this will not be a problem. Okay, type, that's why I have to bring the appeal. Because I want the planning commission make a mistake of understanding the law. And that's why I bring this up. So that the city understand what's going on. And the city council make the appropriate uh action to amend the mistake that the planning commission made last year. Thank you.
Uh, if I could, if I could, the way fifteen is currently written, there shall be no patrons inside the location under the age of twenty-one at any time for six P M, Monday through Sunday. That may be a permissible way of approaching it. I'm not sure if staff has looked at that. Does I don't know if the police department or uh planning staff looked at that at the time this was put in.
You know what? Type forty-eight is very rare. You know, we have seven, six in 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 uh in our city. Because the the rule is so strict. I mean, you look at the uh all the establishment that we have now sitting. Uh, you know, like we have uh Green Gird Saloon. I mean, it's a bar. We have Sessibon Cocktail. It's a bar. We have uh the beach. We have Poste Bar. We have uh the library, Gentleman Club. These are hardcore bar. They do not allow minor to enter. And that's why these type of liquor license is very rare. Because it's required very strict enforcement from A B C. And that's why I'm trying to convey the message. So that you need to look at and do your homework and understand this is not something that we don't want you to do to open a business. This type, you own a business, type of the type business you you trying to open, it go against the A B C law. Okay, you read it, okay? Do your research. Don't have to trust me. Do your research. Call people up. I mean, it's been like several months and nobody take the time to call A B C and ask them, hey, if I want to do this, can I do this? And they will give you confirmation. Very simple. Thank you.
I want, so I understand if this facility open a hot liquor operation like that, I agree that they should keep the 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 minor out. But this facility understand how it works. A lot of time they have sit community event. Sometime they had family celebration, an organizational meeting without serving alcohol at all.
Listen, Wayne, you're wasting your time. You just need to confirm with A B C. Because if if the city council approved it tonight, you have to deal with A B C. On it, what you say is gonna be in public record. They're gonna look at what you say to them. They're gonna make a decision whether or not gonna approve your permit to operate your business. Okay, so you're gonna, you have to deal with them. You don't have to.
Can I suggest, can I suggest, ult- ultimately, there the business is gonna have to comply with A B C requirements regardless of what the city said. So the I think the perm or the way it's stated right now, uh, I think we could proceed. Uh, ultimately, whether it's approved or not, he's gonna have to comply with A B C requirements. So even if we said it was okay, if A B C says it's not allowed, then it's not allowed. Because that's the condition of the license. So I'm just point, I think we could probably move on from this point.
Okay. You're muting.
Vice Mayor Nguyen, I think you're muted.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, so city clerk, at this point here, you can go ahead and bring in uh go ahead and read the e comments or any um speaker that you have. You may invite them in.
Perfect, thank you. So um I do have quite a bit of e comments that I've received. And just for the record, these e comments are available um on the city's website. And the council members did receive them in advance. So um just briefly, first e comment received is from David Voe. And it just says, attached, please find a comprehensive list of Westminster business owners and residents signing on the petition to support my license applications, which were previously approved by the planning commission and up for review this coming Wednesday. A vast number of these endorsers either live or do business next to or near my company. And told I believe there are over a hundred signatures um of Westminster businesses and residents. And so um there's a a list of, again, supporters that he provided. And it's available online. Next one is from Laura Tran and states, my name's Laura Tran Nelson. I'm writing this letter on behalf of an activist in the West, in the Vietnamese community since nineteen ninety, as well as representative of my brother's uh family, living at one five five O O Magnolia. I'm writing this letter to urge you, mayor and city council, to grant a great favor to the owner of O C Entertainment. As a member of the Vietnamese community during three decades, I know the owner of O C Entertainment is a very good and helpful citizen who is volunteering his time to helping the community to the fullest by providing meeting location for different organizations in the community, such as the Tet Parade Committee, the Black April Commemoration, place and a place for regular meetings in the community. I also think that our city, we always need more new businesses to bring more tax income for the city and make the city great and more prosperous. Now, that's why I don't see any inconvenience for the city to deny his case. Um, and let's see. Thank you for your generous support. And again, that's from Laura Tran Nelson. Next one is from Mr. Tony Buie. And it states, I'm Tony Buie. He used to be planning commissioner of city of Westminster from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen. I had contributed a lot of successful efforts to keeping, to keep the city thriving. I want to show my support to the owner of O C Entertainment located at one four one ninety Beach Boulevard on another hearing stage by one of the city council. I knew that for the past four years, the owner, Mr. David Voe, has spent a lot of money, time, and effort to get the C U P. I recalled that three months ago, the city planning commissioner had approved his request. Mr. David Voe has a good record contributing to the growth of the city of Westminster in social and educational events. His newspaper, Viet Need, distribute freely to the O C area, indicated that he want to help the city grow on many aspects. In Lunar New Year twenty nineteen, Mr. Voe was the head of the organ organizer of the Westminster's Tet Parade. The parade was such a successful event for the city. Many residents of the city of Westminster brought up doubt that the city council, that the city council, Mr. Tito did not perform his duties, but created hardship to businessmen that he does not like. Are there any influences that this guy had with a nightclub located close by O C? City of Westminster should carefully review its councils to prevent litigation due to discrimination and incompetency. I want to participate in this hearing to bring up this concern. Best regards, Tony Buie. Next one is from Dewey Hong. And it states, my name's Dewey Hong, resident in Westminster. I write this letter to support the fine establishment called the O C Entertainment. As a member of the community, I understand how hard it is to run a business, especially at this difficult time of the pandemic, yet the business owner has been working hard for the past four years in our city. I'd like to see it thrive and acknowledge its contribution to the economy. Please help the business that makes a difference. Thank you. And again, that's from Dewey Hong. Next one's from Hoa Nguyen. I'm I'm Hoa Nguyen, a retiree and a member of Vietnamese community of Southern California. I write this letter to support the O C Entertainment. O C Entertainment is a place in need for social and cultural events for Vietnamese in Orange County. This is a community-oriented and safe place for senior Vietnamese gathering on special occasions. I strongly support O C Entertainment. Again, that's from Hoa Nguyen. Next one's from Nguyen Nguyen. States, my name is Nguyen Nguyen, a housewife and retiree of the city of Westminster after serving for twenty-eight years. I write this letter to support the O C Entertainment located on one four one ninety Beach Boulevard. The reason I support this business is because I've been there with my husband many times at community events. It is a community-oriented and a safe place for family gathering. I've never heard of anything negative about it. I strongly support O C Entertainment. Thank you and best regards, Nguyen Nguyen. Next one is from Miss Terry Rains. Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I'm sorry I cannot speak myself tonight due to illness. I received an email yesterday that the agenda packet had been amended to include additional correspondence related to this item, including petitions signed in support of the project submitted by the applicant. The petition fails to mention anything about an actual nightclub operating at the site seven days a week with dancing and a full liquor license. I contacted several of the names listed. Most are personal friends with the applicant and are under the impression the case was only about serving alcohol at special events, an extension of the current issue. Some business businesses are listed twice, such as Trust Media, owned by traffic commissioner Nam Quan Nguyen. And virtually all the signatures are from Vietnamese residents and businesses. The only way a vote can happen on this item tonight is through the process of legally required participation under government code section eight seven one oh one, because four of the five council members should be recusing themselves. Councilman Manzo already voted no on the item as a planning commissioner at the October twenty-one, twenty twenty hearing. Mayor Ta appears to live within one thousand feet of the proposed site. Attorney Van Tran, who represents the applicant, is currently representing certain council members in various matters related to their official capacities. Those same council members have used the proposed site for their political campaign and other events and are close friends with the applicant. During the planning commission hearing on October twenty-one, twenty twenty, Attorney Van Tran responded to portions of my testimony, stating my information was erroneous. I provided evidence to the council, planning commission, and staff that backed up my statements. Per the secretary of state website, multiple businesses owned by Mr. Voe at this location have been suspended by the franchise tax board. Public records attributable to Mr. Voe show fifteen lean recordings, ten unique cases of which six are recorded against Mr. Voe at the one four one nine O Beach Boulevard address. Two of the records in P A are lean releases. Public records for Mr. Voe also showed two bankruptcies, two thousand thirteen dismissed and two thousand seventeen discharged, and an eighty-five thousand four hundred and eleven dollar judgment filed against him in two thousand twelve. To my knowledge, Mr. Voe has no experience in nightclub operations, but he does seem to have experience in circumventing rules and regulations, even regularly parking in the restricted handicap space in front of Vietnamese. It is unclear whether Mr. Voe actually resides in California. He tends to dodge the question verbally and in all of his correspondence. The proposed nightclub site is literally just across the shared parking access from Blue Restaurant and Dancing. The staff report indicates an approximate ninety-foot distance, but it might be less depending on where you measure from. Unlike Blue, the applicant does not plan to prepare or serve any food on site, just alcohol, except for catering on the occasional banquet event. This site is located only two hundred fifty-five feet from multifamily residential housing. There are other significant concerns about parking, loitering, parking lot nuisances, public drunkenness, D U Is, and other crimes against persons or property. Blue has already experienced people illegally parking in their parking lot when the applicant hosts a large event. When confronted about this, now city councilman Chi Charlene Nguyen, who represented the applicant in two thousand seventeen, argued that people can park wherever they want. The parking study the applicant submitted looked at peak usage on the weekend before Thanksgiving of last year, which is not a true representation of peak parking throughout the year. Most people were home with family or busy planning their holiday getaway that week. According to Westminster, municipal code section seventeen point three-two oh point zero-two zero, only fifty-five spaces are required for the nightclub. Yet the occupancy load is three sixty-six. That's almost seven people per car. The city needs to reevaluate the parking requirement code for this particular land use. The parking requirement for existing plus proposed uses is a hundred and fifty huge spaces, but the parking lot only provides a hundred and twenty-two spaces. The applicant is requesting shared parking to cover the deficit. This location is in a high crime area just as it was back in two thousand seventeen. The crime count for this area is thirty-two percent higher than average. The Westminster P D report states, quote, based on the fact that both of these nightclubs will be sharing the same parking area, there are numerous possible police-related concerns, end quote. One relates to response tactical challenges. I'm disappointed our P D is not providing more detail about the known risks of having two nightclubs just feet from each other in a high-crime area, providing their expert knowledge and recommendations of the council is necessary to prevent, protect, and serve the community. If approved, the applicant must not be allowed to charge an admission fee, cover charge, or minimum drink purchase requirement per Westminster Municipal Code section seventeen point four zero zero point zero five five C one I. The applicant must not be allowed to utilize third-party promoters with media advertising, advertising per section seven point four zero zero point zero five five C one H of the Westminster Municipal Code. There are also concerns that minors will be allowed into the facility during special events such as weddings, which is expressly forbidden. I urge the council to reverse the planning commission's three-two approval of this case and deny the application tonight. Thank you." And that was from Terry Rains. Next one is from sorry about that, Lin Nguyen. And it states, "My name's Lin Nguyen, a resident and former planning traffic, planning slash traffic commissioner of Westminster. I write this letter to support the application for the OC Entertainment uh, located at one four one ninety Beach Boulevard. As a member of the community, I promote business owners to work hard and do business honestly, especially during this difficult time of the pandemic. Found the owner has been working hard for the past four years in our city. Secondly, found no negative feedback from stores of neighboring businesses or residents, residents around the facility. Last but not least, I know that the owner, David Voe, Voe, has always made generous contributions in many ways to community events. I would like to see it's success. Please help the business that makes a difference. Sign, Lin Nguyen." Next one is from Andrew Nguyen. And it states, uh, "My name's Andrew Nguyen, rest, west, excuse me. My name is Andrew Nguyen, a resident of Westminster. I'd like to write this letter to ask the council to support the OC Entertainment. The reason I support it, first, I like Westminster because the city is pro-business. So our city should encourage more small business owners. OC Entertainment is joining one of them. It is where I found the owner had sponsored numerous community events free of charge for the little Saigon area, like Tet Parade or the yearly Black April Commemoration. Secondly, it's clean and safe. Above all, it has no record of disturbances or illegal activities. And what I like best is its spectacular stage that you can't find anywhere but Westminster. I strongly support OC Entertainment. Thank you." Again, that's from Andrew Nguyen. Next one is from Nam Quan Nguyen. "My name is Nam Quan Nguyen, a member of the Westminster Traffic Commission. I pray that God continues to look after you and your families, as well as all of the city's residents during this difficult time as we continue to suffer from severe hardships caused by the China virus pandemic. I'm here to voice my support for the applications of OC Entertainment, a business in good standing in Westminster. These applications were already approved by the planning commission last, late last year. As we all know, it has been almost a year since the China virus wrought deadly havoc onto our shores. Until now, in the U.S. alone, more than six hundred, three hundred and sixty thousand Americans have died from this terrible virus. The virus not only brings death upon us, but also destroyed on our economy, causing job loss and business closures. Millions of Americans in general and thousands of Westminster residents in particular have been living off their ever shrinking savings while waiting for help from the government. At this difficult time, we need all hands on deck to stand strong and rebuild this great nation. We will bring wealth and prosperity to Westminster. However, talking won't get things done. We need everyone to show their love by giving this nation their best. President Kennedy has said, quote, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country," end quote. It is time for doers and strong positive leaders to step up. We have to take action to build our city. It's not the time for the weak and the talkers who prevent us from rebuilding our economy. The city needs to bring in more businesses to create jobs and to streamline the business permitting procedures to attract companies to Westminster. And one company before you is OC Entertainment, as this company would like to continue to operate in Westminster. As a Westminster Traffic Commissioner, I would warmly welcome OC Entertainment to do business with my city. Over the past five years, the management of OC Entertainment has proven to Westminster that it has been a good corporate citizen. OC Entertainment also contributed much of its resources and finances to numerous civic order, organizations and residents in the city. Therefore, I urge the mayor and council members to assist OC Entertainment in its goal of success in Westminster and continue to support its business applications and objectives, so that I ca, that it can continue to provide quality business services to Westminster residents and the surrounding areas. Respectfully, Nam Quan Nguyen." Next one is from Mary Lee. And it states, "My name is Mary Lee, a Westminster resident. We live on Pacific Street across from Blue Restaurant. We oppose the idea of having two nightclubs so close together. It is less than one minute walking distance between the two clubs. It will increase traffic, more noise. The parking issues will be a big problem and going in and out of Beach Boulevard will create traffic jam. Also, there will be more alcohol consumption and more accidents. The police will have to work double hard and will create additional security and safety concerns for the neighborhood, not to mention more crimes. On behalf of the most of the neighbors in this neighborhood, we are asking the city to think for our safety and security. If there's so many signs of potential problems, the city should try to prevent it from happening. Please don't wait for bad things to happen, then solve it. We're asking you to use common sense and do not approve another nightclub in the same area. It will create additional problems to this neighborhood. The city needs to protect its citizens. Thank you, Mary Lee, Westminster." Next one is from Ben Nguyen. And it states, "My name's Ben Nguyen, a business owner of Westminster, also representing the Vietnamese community of Southern California. I'm writing this letter in support of OC Entertainment. I have visited this business many times, have not noticed any problems for residents or neighboring businesses. I've not heard any complaint or trouble from members of the community. Thank you for your time." Again, that one's from Ben Nguyen. Um, next one is from Alex Martinez and it states, "My name is Alex Martinez, the owner of KMA Security. KMA Security, this KMA has been a security company for Blue Restaurant and Dancing for the past ten years. When we learned that Vietnamese magazine is requesting a permit for a nightclub and selling alcohol, I already consider, I already can foresee so many problems that will happen. The first issue is the parking. Vietnamese magazine does not have enough parking for nightclub business. Their customers will end up using Blue's parking lot. We've already seen this happen several times in the past when Vietnamese magazine had events that brought over a hundred people. It was impossible to prevent Vietnamese magazines guests from parking in Blue's parking lot. It was even worse when on many occasions, we had to stop multiple fights from customers of both places regarding parking spaces. Second, the traffic jam will be horrendous on Beach Boulevard. Imagine five hundred cars coming from both nightclubs, from both nightclubs coming in and out at the same time, uh, late at night. How do we control traffic? We just can't and we are not equipped to do this. Third, both nightclubs will have music and that's added noise for the neighborhood. Blue has particularly good sound and noise insulation for sound control, but we don't know how good Vietnamese will be. Regardless, it will for sure be more noise. And fourth, more people will be drinking. You probably can see the problems already, more DUIs, more accidents and more crime. As a security person, I urge the city of Westminster to not allow another nightclub to open so close to each other like this for the safety of the neighborhood and everyone else. Please say no to this request. Thank you, Alex Martinez, KMA Security." And then, um, we also did receive, uh, a petition, uh, from Connie Nguyen, owner of Blue. And so that is uploaded to the website, but I won't be reading her comments as she is asked to speak during the oral communication or the public hearing, uh, comment of this, uh, comments for public hearing. So at this time, that concludes e comments, but I do have, uh, people who've, uh, requested to speak. So at this time, um, I'd like to see, bring up Don Johnson, who requested, Don, are you with us? Mr. Johnson?
I hope so.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor, City Council and staff. Also, I should include mayor and the others, even though they're not participating this time. I've been the manager of the property surrounding this location for twenty one years. That is the, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I also represent the ownership, uh, also during that entire time. The issue here is not that we all want good businesses, including even more bars and restaurants in the city of Westminster. In fact, in the planning commission meeting, several of the planning commissioners said, gee, we wish we could have a place like a downtown Disney, like a Gaslight District in San Diego or other places that would have lots of bars and restaurants all in one location to promote that kind of business and to generate the kind of, uh, excitement for a city. This is just simply the wrong kind of license in the wrong place. The question of the ABC license, I worked in the restaurant and bar business for many years and have managed many properties with restaurant and bars. That is not what this license is, as been pointed out by Councilman Do. This is a bar license, period. He will have the right, if approved, to run a bar. That bar, which, uh, according to the plan shown on, by the staff earlier, shows that over eighty five percent of the, uh, use of the square footage of the space is devoted to bar and dancing and very little percentage is devoted to the, quote, business of, of the media. There is nothing wrong with having that if it was in the right place for this kind of business. The other issue of parking, one of the comments made during the planning commission is, gee, maybe we'll just make them put up a fence between the two properties. There is a partly a four inch by six inch curb dividing the two properties. As was stated earlier, the parking spaces in our parking lot are closer to the front entry of the proposed bar than their own parking places in the, uh, parking lot that they're asking to, uh, have a CPU exception due to the numbers. The numbers have explained very well. There is no place to put a hundred and fifty patron cars at the same time of a sale at Sam Ash at nine, eight thirty, seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night on a busy holiday weekend. If they're having an event, there will be three hundred and four hundred cars in a parking lot that only has a hundred and fifty for the two businesses. As expressed earlier, we've had issues with big events there before. I have no issues with that, except they never came to us to ask for permission to use our parking lot, to provide the insurance and for security to use our parking lot. They just had their big event and had people park all over our parking lots. I have an obligation to the existing tenants to make sure that there's not a disturbance for their businesses, whether that's Restaurant Blue or the county and other, uh, major tenants that occupy the businesses in my three buildings that completely surround and is the only parking spaces that are open to the public within walking, reasonable walking distances, uh, of this business other than using other strip retail, which is currently to the south of the property. I'm sure they would be very happy to let them use their parking spaces during their business time. I'm being facetious, I'm sorry. This is simply, again, the wrong license in the wrong location, not with the facility designed to have this. Restaurant Blue has a double set of doors inside the unit. Not only do they have their front entry doors, but there's extra set of doors to separate the sound and music generation from coming out into the outside. I saw nothing in the plan for them to have a secondary ancillary soundproofing in that business, which was brought up by commissioners and other people during the earlier discussions. Finally, I would love to have Mr. Voe do a great bar and, and facility in the city of Westminster.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. As we said, this is a great look, great idea, a great business city. It's just, again, wrong kind of permit, not legally allowed under twenty one. Finally, let's look at the list of people he put in there. I will only address two because they represented two of my tenants on his list submitted, uh, both the, the, uh, on number nine and number ten under submit all was for the, um, business New Horizon, who has moved out and no longer part of our, uh, establishment. They have left. And also Oak Tree Enterprises, number ten, also listed in fourteen one eighty suite two oh four, which is an unauthorized business. I have no clue who they are. They have no license or ability to be in that location. As I said, now the, the place is completely vacant because they've all moved out. I have any, I'd say twenty one years there and, and any questions from this council or staff, be happy to answer them.
Out of time. Next speaker is Connie Nguyen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, honorable, um, mayor, vice mayor and council members. My name is Connie Nguyen. My husband and I are the owners of Blue Restaurant and Dancing located at one four one six zero Beach Boulevard in Westminster, which is less than one hundred feet away from the applicant's proposed, uh, site. We have been proud owners at this location, serving the communities for over twenty years. Blue is a restaurant with a full type of liquor license, type forty seven, and an entertainment permit issued since two thousand and one by the Police Department, Westminster Police Department and the State's Alcoholic Beverage Control. I'm here today regarding the adjacent business operating as Vietnamese magazine CUP request before you tonight and will be operating as a nightclub with a liquor license type forty eight, which you are, as you are aware, only allows twenty one and over customers on the premise at all time, twenty four hours a day. Now, let's talk about type forty eight. Besides, uh, Mr. Thai Do, it seems like no one understand what type forty eight, uh, is, uh, including the lawyer, uh, Len Nguyen. I own type forty eight for twenty eight years, so I know exactly what type forty eight is. Type forty eight is ruled by, is ABC rules, it's not, um, a city rules. And it does not allow children under twenty one, uh, on the premise at any given time. So that means twenty four hours a day. No children, no, no one under twenty one can enter and remain. So how, how does, um, the applicant continue to be a media, a community center and a banquet hall? It's impossible. Uh, can someone tell me a business only serves alcohol, no food, dancing, music until two AM, only allow twenty one and overs, uh, to ten, cannot do weddings, cannot do birthday? What do you call that business? For sure, it's an adult club. Is a club, oh, uh, what else? And, um, um, and then about the parking, only fifty five spaces are required for three hundred and sixty six people capacity nightclub. How is that possible? I don't understand. Honestly, we don't have a problem if Mr. David Voe want to open a nightclub in Westminster. He just need to find another location that has no clubs around with adequate mark parking space spaces. Now, when we talked to the surrounding neighbors, everyone was very concerned and no one wants another nightclub in the area. By the way, regarding the applicant's petition list that the applicant submitted, we know a lot of people on that list and I called a few people today and they all said that they signed because Mr. Voe told them that the petition is for a one-time outdoor concert in the parking lot of his location as a Trump rally to support Trump. They never saw the petition and Mr. David Voe never told them about the nightclub application. They tried to contact Mr. Voe today to withdraw the signatures, but there was no reply. This is very wrong, very illegal and very dishonest. So, um, if you allow Vietnamese magazine to change from a media center to a nightclub, does that mean all media centers in Westminster can request to become a nightclub when their business is not doing well? Well, also, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Charlie Nguyen was the one that represent the applicant in two thousand seventeen hearing for the exact same CUP and
One minute left.
Yeah, well, uh, we feel, we feel like, uh, we hope that, uh, um, you don't put your close personal relationship over the safety and well-being, uh, of our, um, for the neighborhood and, uh, in the interest of the surrounding neighbor, we respectfully ask you to deny Vietnamese magazine the request. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration and anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Boyd. Jody?
Hi, good evening, everybody. We are a nation of laws and we must uphold the laws. The California Alcohol and Beverage Control, or ABC, sets the laws and the various license types. The wording and the intent of ABC license type forty eight is very clear. And it does not allow anyone under the age of twenty one at any time or for any purpose. The core issue here is the applicant, David Voe, simply has the wrong type of liquor license or the wrong intent for his location. The best thing to do under these circumstances is to make no decision or to deny um, his request and give him the opportunity to go back and revise his application and get an ABC liquor license type forty seven. That type would allow him to conduct the wedding receptions and other types of events that he would like to hold where there will be minors present. The city of Westminster cannot sidestep or make exceptions for the ABC laws. Second, I'm very concerned about having Second, I'm very concerned about having two businesses of the same type in such close proximity. And during his presentation, Lan Kwak Wen, he made a very good point and that was, he was the first one to throw stones against the other business owner and point fingers when he brought up a very tragic event that happened and blamed it on the business owner who had nothing to do with it. It's that type of uncalled-for rivalry that makes me feel very concerned that there will be similar hard feelings or rivalry between the patrons, between the two clubs. We don't want, we don't need anything like that. We want harmony and I was shocked that Lan Kwak Wen brought up something like that. So again, my best recommendation is that this item tonight be denied simply because he has the wrong type of liquor license. That's very cut and dried. Also, for the speaker that quoted previous President John F. Kennedy, completely out of context, asked not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country had absolutely nothing to do with opening businesses or nightclubs. Please go back and review the entire speech and its context. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So last speaker is Davora Mariscal, unless anyone else who would like to speak, this would be your last chance to raise your hand.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members and Westminster residents who are listening on the on the meeting tonight, Davora Mariscal, Westminster. I live on the north side of Beach and Westminster and I walk my dogs down Beach Boulevard and through the Sam Ash parking lot probably three or four times a week, early in the morning. And some of the things that I see there are not all that great. And my concern would be as we have two competing venues, two, two basic bars, what kind of altercations are we going to have? What kind of criminal activity are we going to have? What kind of things are we going, am I going to see when I walk my dogs at six or seven o'clock in the morning that is now in this Sam Ash parking lot? Who's cleaning that up anyway? I would love to see something like what Westminster Manor was. My synagogue and family had many, many, many events there. They did not have a liquor license, but people were allowed to bring in their own wine or beer, whatever it is. If, I think they had a capacity of 125, if I remember correctly. It's been a few years. We would take up the entire parking lot of the Chase Bank, of the Wells Fargo Bank and what there was for Westminster Manor. There just isn't enough parking spaces in that area. There, there will be a lot of issues that have already been brought up by the, by the other speakers. And we definitely need, don't, do not need, excuse me, do not need any more crime in our particular area. We don't need any more stress on our police department, on EMT or anything else. I would love to see a venue like what Westminster Manor was, open somewhere here in the city. Daniel Lyons did an absolutely fabulous job, completely support businesses open, but it's got to be something that makes sense, that is the correct geographical area, that has the proper liquor license, that is, in my opinion, family oriented, like what Westminster Manor was and that can bring revenue into the city. I personally feel, since I live pretty close to there, that, that that particular location does not meet those qualifications, in my opinion. And I do agree that this should not be approved. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate everything that everybody's doing on this.
Thank you. At this time, Vice Mayor, I do not have any additional speakers.
All right, thank you very much. And I would like to take this moment to thank you residents sending in your email, your comments, ecomments. And I want to thank you speakers calling in to voice your opinion. Appreciate for your opinions. Before I call on the council for any other questions, I'd like to give the applicant a chance to respond to any concerns that were made. So if you can, go ahead and connect the applicant or their representative to come back.
Yes. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for allowing me to come back. At this time, I even I request for the amendment to condition fifteen, but a little bit up to the council to amend it on the, with the condition not serving alcohol, so that I feel strongly that sometime children can be here for other event, for other, but activity not where alcohol not being served, but up to the council to live as is. My client told me that he can live with that, he can just, it basically the minor when we're not into that event, that, that fine too. But I do ask if you can amend that condition fifteen to, to make an acceptance where the children can be there if not alcohol not being served. What happened a lot for this type of activity here? And, and that's all. I thank you very much again, the council for taking the time to consider this application.
Can I have a question for Mr. Nguyen?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Apparently, you know, there's a mistake and the misunderstood law in, in Mr. David Ba's counsel, especially counsel. He probably misguided his regarding the type forty-eight liquor license. So basically, you know, that's the reason, based on my experience and knowledge, the reason most businesses, restaurants, they prefer type forty-seven because they have to have a kitchen, have to serve food. So maybe your, your client tried to save money and not wanting to invest in a kitchen so that they have to resort to type forty-eight. And it's going to be a huge problem with ABC. Have you, would you consider withdraw your application and go back to a drawing plan and come up with a different business plan and come back to the planning commission and apply for the, with a different type of license, ABC license and reapply?
Respectfully, I do not withdraw the application. I concur with the city council that regardless of what the city council does today, he still has an obligation to comply with the ABC law imposed to him. He had to go through that hurdle with ABC and he still had to do that, whatever he's required to do under the ABC law. So the CUP before the council today, it only to make, impose certain condition with respect to the community's safety. And then that is, that's why we have a series of condition that impose. So I'm not mistaken on the law, the city council had a discretion to make an exception variance, modification with respect to the safety of the community and leave it up to the ABC to take care of itself. The city council does not have to handle, has, to be concerned with the ABC enforcement of regulation and, but except to require that the application comply with ABC regulation as it is imposed to them. So for that, I don't think I should withdraw the application at this time.
I just want to stand that the suggestion, I do some, I do some business. I'd like to see a business become successful in our city. But at, at this point, I mean, you know, it's unfortunate that there's a misunderstanding of the law, so, well, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Okay, any question from the council for the applicant before I close the hearing? Hearing done, so I'm going to close the public hearing. So at this point here, for the council members' comment. So I invite the council for comment first. Council member Ho, you have anything to, to say? Is council member Ho still with us? Okay.
Okay, um. Okay, so first of all, there are currently six, these are the facts. There are currently six on-sale licenses in the census, in this census tract. There is not an oversaturation of ABC license. Fact, Vitme request falls inside, within guidelines. And and fact, for the parking demand study, a licensed engineer was used. I believe it's I believe it's, they're familiar, our city planners are familiar with and do believe that that really speaks for itself, the validity, the validity of their findings. And the finding is that there is enough parking for this use. And the conclusion, mind you, is that there are sixty surplus parking spaces, 122 spaces required. So the proposed shared parking, and I read and I read it this packet twice, is consistent with the general plan. And the general plan is such that it encourages that land users that have different parking demands at different times of the day to share the same parking facilities. Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong. And so really, those are the facts. I know everybody's kind of questioning, why does the media company share with an entertainment company and how does that work? And, you know, do they have the know-how to run an entertainment company when they are a media company? I really don't think that's any of our business. The segments that Vitme serves. Okay, well, let's talk about that. It's a place for the community to hold community events, culture events, is what I'm just summarizing and what I heard speakers earlier, for older people and not a nightclub. And I understand that they got ABC type forty-eight. So the applicant, I'm going to talk about that, but what I also heard about competition, I want to make sure it is clear and I, and, and may I ask our city attorney to, to listen to me clearly and correct me if I am wrong about what I'm saying here regarding competition. I want to make it clear that this council does not try to prevent or advocate for any non-competition. We're not, we cannot say that we, we're going to stop competition. We cannot do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, I know so because in the private sector, I, I, I know, I know because I've been in business thirty years. We can never, we can never stop having competitions. It would not be legal. So anywhere in the United States. Okay, and so I'm saying that, you know, if they're next door, they're competing, you know, competition is good. And I know that that's hard to, for us to comprehend. Competition really brings the best out of, you know, make us, business owners have to work harder to compete for business. Trust me, it does. And so I, I really embrace competition. So I am a pro business, yes. In this economy and any economy, we need to give support to our business community and not to make it harder for them to succeed, not to make it harder and putting barriers for them to decline. Um, you know, this particular, it disturbs me and I must mention it is because planning commission approved, the approval came October something, the end of October. And within fourteen days, Councilman Doe exercised his right to pull up a review. And, and I know that's my right, but what really bothers me is that it, you see, if it, if it wasn't because of COVID, he, you know, Mr. David missed out on the entire holiday. It would have been like a, with COVID, it would have been a very sad thing for, for a business owner missing out on holiday sales in the holiday season. So, so I, I feel, I feel bad, but then, you know, who, who has the foresight of knowing that, you know, COVID is still around and that, you know, we didn't plan on, you know, if you were to go with this timeline and in the regular, in regular times, you know, he would have missed out on the whole entire, you know, holiday season. So that would have made it really bad for business. So I'm saying that, you know, I, I, I know how hard a business person has to work. I mean, she, he, he's the residual claimant because he gets paid last. Okay, if I, and I'm looking at everything, I'm looking at, at the law. So the, this applicant needs to abide by ABC law, type not forty-seven, but type forty-eight. And be clear that I am not budging, I'm not excusing him because I have no right to. So he needs to abide by that law and need to be clear of what he can and cannot do. And as per Chief Lotteback, what he quote, I quote him, what he said was, I have the utmost faith that our PD department can handle it. So I do have faith in him as well. I do have faith in our PD as well. And I do think that it's, it would be unfair to Vitme to not be able to have this license. So I move forward and I don't know if you want to hear more people to speak, other council members. But I'm done.
Okay, um. You know, in response to councilwoman Kimberly Ho talking about the lights, the applicants, Mr. David Ball missing out on the holiday sales and all that stuff, you're probably not familiar with getting a liquor license, not getting a you have to go through ABC, getting the application, posting sign in front of the building and go through all the inspection until they give you a green light before you can open your business and run your business. So it's not going to be like, just like getting a license because the city approved and you can open the door and and conduct business in front of the site, like a nightclub. No, it doesn't happen that way. The reason I, as I mentioned before, the reason I initiated the appeal because I believe there was a mistaken of law by the planning commission and I would like to have the civil, the city council to correct that wrong before getting out of hand. Apparently, it's the entire city staff have no idea what license type ABC license type forty-eight is. It's very strict, it's very difficult, and we try to save the applicant time and efforts. So basically, with type forty-eight, you don't have to have a kitchen. You can cater your food, but the problem with that is going to have a very strict ABC enforcement. So basically, you're gonna have wasting your time, money and effort. Okay, and us as a city council, we are responsible to have the understanding of the law. It runs the law, it's not an excuse. How many times you hear that? You get cited for things you didn't know, right? So we are the representative of a city. We are the expert. We need to understand. And we need to correct the wrong from the planning commission. There were several issue, safety issue in here, but we can go through all that. It's all these, all these safety, public safety issues already mentioned by a lot of people, speaker. But right now at this point, type forty-eight ABC, there's no minor allow in that building. I understand the applicant's efforts. Okay, he want to open up a banquet hall, family, I mean. We've been there, done that. It's important. It's great. But with type forty-eight, it will not be the do it. And it is, it is our responsibility to correct the wrong from the planning commission. So I urge the city council, of those you both have, both know the applicant well, there's a huge conflict of interest, but I'm asking you two to be able to see what we're trying to tell you. Issue that we have at hand and make the appropriate vote to correct the wrong from the planning commission. Mr. David Vaughn can go back to redraw the business plan and look at the ABC law closer and resubmit the application. Okay, there's money involved. He cannot try to save money by not having a kitchen with type forty-eight and try to achieve what he want by allowing a family-oriented in that, in that building. It cannot be, it cannot be done. That's why the type license type forty-eight is very rare. Entire cities only six. And you look at them, they, none of them are family-oriented business. They're all hardcore liquor bar, adult entertainment, where there's no one under twenty-one allowed, period. And I'd like to, with that, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application and habits of law, redraw the business plan and resubmit.
Okay, I respectfully hear you making a motion, but I guess that we are not there yet. We are not at the causal action item yet. We are still at the point where council members comment. So it is my time to comment, to make my comments.
We do need, we do need, there is a motion made though, so I think you need to see if there's a second to the motion.
Oh, yeah, but we, we are not at the causal action yet. We are still making comments and I do have the comments to make. I thought that we have to make a comments before we do the causal action, right?
Uh, we're listening, we're listening.
You can, okay, so we'll hold off on the motion. You make your motion again later.
So, you know, on item fifteen, there shall be no patron inside the location under age two twenty-one, anytime after six P M. Monday through Sunday. That's the decision that our commissioner, planning commissioner made based on that. And our city attorney, deputy city attorney already state that maybe okay there, but if not, they still have to comply with the ABC regulations. Now, I, I have to say that first of all, I would like to thank you, thank our planning staff, CD traffic engineer and our WPD for your hard work. And I'm amazed with the time and efforts that you put in. I have read the staff report and all the attachment that you, that you included there, including the traffic analysis from K two engineering along with our WPD report and recommendations. And I would like to thank the planning commissioners for your hard work. You know that, I know that you did all the necessary due diligence before you decide what best for our community. I have no problem with council member Doe bringing this case back for council to review. Although I would say almost, if not all of his concern have been addressed in the staff report, traffic engineering analysis report, all and all police report. As outlined in the resolution, the decisions will make according to the law and regulation for approving a proposed nightclub banquet facility. Let me go ahead and take some time to read that again so that everybody can understand. Section one pursuant to section one five three zero guidelines for implementation of sequel. The project found to be included in the list of the class of the projects which have been determined not to have a significant effect on the environment and which therefore filed to be exempt from provision of sequel. Section two pursuant to section seventeen point five five zero point zero two, fighting and decisions of Westminster Municipal Court. The planning commissioner approved the conditional use permit. Let me summarize the point that the commissioner outlined in the resolution. As far as the proposed nightclub banquet facility, the proposed use is allowed within the subject zoning district with approval of administrative and and all conditional use permit and complies with all other applicable, applicable provision of this title and WMC. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan. The design, location, size, operating characteristic of the proposed use are compatible with the existing and future land used in the vicinity of the subject site. The subject site is physical, physically suitable for the type and intensity of the use being proposed, including access, compatibility and adjoining land use, shape, size, provision of utilities and the absence of physical constraint. The establishment, maintenance or operation of the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety and general welfare or interest to person, property or improvement in the vicinity and zoning district in which the property is located. Now, section three pursuant to section seventeen point five five zero point two, fighting and decision of the Westminster Municipal Court, the planning commissioner approved of an administrative, which is the second one, use permit for a shared parking agreement. As stated in our staff report and the CD traffic engineer have reviewed our CD, our traffic engineer have reviewed and approved analysis of the K two traffic engineering. And actually, the applicant already hired a private traffic engineer to do the analysis before providing it to our CD to review and approve. So with all that being said, I certainly believe the review and the consideration to approve the project has done according to the Westminster Municipal Code and regulations. I want to thank you all, our staff for your hard work. I want to thank you, our WPD for taking the time to review the case and provide additional recommendations to ensure the proposed nightclub banquet's use or operation will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety or general welfare in the vicinity and this and zoning district. So at this point here, I would like to conclude the council comment. And next is for council action. So I believe that council member Doe, you already make a motion. Would you mind to go ahead and repeat that?
I'd like to make a motion for the city council to take action to deny the applicant's, the condition you use permit to upgrade a banquet hall to correct the mistake that the planning commission made voted last year on the, based on the mistaken misunderstanding of the law and for all the safety concern, public safety concern that brought up during the hearing.
Okay.
Basically, this action gonna prove to the resident of this Westminster that you have to do everything by the book, by the law, and you will get the proper licensing permit. You don't need to know anybody. You don't need to have anyone in the city can know anyone in the city council to get the proper approval, to get licensing. Because if we approve this, it's basically it's a conflict between interests for the majority of the city council who knows the applicants very well and continue to approve without, even though it's against the law, it's go against the state law. And we ignore that and go and go ahead and override the state law, which is type forty-eight ABC liquor license, which specifically does not
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because I'm, can you brief on your recommendation or motion, please? So that we can understand.
The city attorney, could you do that for? Well, my understanding is that you wanted to make a motion to deny the application overturning the decision of the planning commission.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that? Hearing none. Am I right, deputy city attorney?
The motion would fail for lack of a second.
Okay, is there anything else that we have to do?
There, if there's an alternative motion?
Yes, alternative motion is I would like to uphold the planning commissioner approval. I want to make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
And let me just state for the record, what's proposed, what was adopted by the planning commission was a resolution. And according to the Westminster Municipal Code, when a matter is appealed to the council, it requires a resolution to take action, whether to uphold, overturn or modify. And that is what's proposed before you tonight is a resolution. A resolution requires three votes to approve, whether it's to approve, to deny it or to overturn it. That's in accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code. So we have a motion in a second. And you should take the vote now. And this is to uphold the, to adopt a resolution that would uphold the decision of the planning commission.
Yes, so that's a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by council member Ho, and it's to adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission's decision. So we'll do a roll call vote with the remaining members. Councilmember Doe.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
And vice mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Okay, the record's gonna reflect that Mayor Ta and Councilmember Manzo have recused themselves and abstained from this vote. That motion still fails two to one.
Yeah, I'd like to make the reflect on the record so that I both know because because the mistaken of the law, the lack of understanding of what type ABC is all about. And that's the reason why I vote no, because
All right. All right, thank you very much. And now I would like to return the rest of the meeting to the, to our mayor. So
Let me make one last statement here, and that is that although the motion fails because the motion was to uphold the decision of the planning commission, it fails simply because there was not three votes to, for the council to adopt any resolution, whether it be to approve or deny, in this case to approve the decision. The council takes no action at this point other than the vote in the record that was taken. And what that means is that the original planning commission decision, since there is no action taken by the council, the planning commission's decision is upheld.
Thank you for your clarification. So now, city clerk. Back to your regular business.
Yes, absolutely. Now I will bring back the mayor and councilman Manzo in just a second.
Right, can you hear me?
Absolutely, welcome back.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next we have regular basis, item five point one, presentation and progress report on the homeless outreach program. So may I have Chief Lotteback to give us a report?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council, and thank you for having us tonight to come give you a presentation on what we've been doing throughout the year and our efforts to help the homeless and provide as much outreach as we can to get them shelter and the help that they need. Tonight, I have with me Commander Kevin McCormick, who's the commander that oversees our homeless liaison program as well as Officer Roland Perez, who is our homeless liaison officer. And they're gonna give you a presentation tonight going over what we've done throughout the year, and then we'll be able to answer any questions for you that you may have. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commander McCormick.
Good evening, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Nguyen and city council. You'll bear with me one moment. I'm gonna share my screen with you. Okay, with our homeless outreach program, we have many resources at our disposal, including two dedicated homeless liaison officers, the second of which we implemented in September of two thousand and twenty. We have the CityNet organization, the homeless prevention rapid rehousing program, Westminster Family Resource Center, as well as projects from surrounding jurisdictions such as the Garden Grove Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Department from the city of Stanton, Huntington Beach Police Department. Huntington Beach Police Department, as well as the Garden Grove Police Department. During the month or the year of two thousand and twenty, our officers responded approximately seventy four thousand calls for service. Forty three thousand, or I'm sorry, forty three hundred of those calls for service were homeless related. Which was the equivalent of approximately two thousand hours spent handling those calls. What you see before you is a GIS map that kind of lays out the areas where officers have responded to. Our normal patrol officers, the red dots that you see depict where the calls that are dispatched for service. Or if a member of the community calls into our dispatch center, the officers will dispatch those locations. The yellow pins are where our officers are conducting self initiated calls for service. We conducted several joint operations with our surrounding partners, such as the Huntington Beach Police Department. In handling the Gothard McFadden area, the Garden Grove Police Department in dealing with the Beach Boulevard twenty two freeway area. The Buena Park Police Department, the California Highway Patrol, and again, as well as the Orange County Sheriff's Department. In two thousand and nineteen, our homeless liaison officer Roland Perez made two hundred and eighty one contacts. In two thousand and twenty, with the assistance of our newest homeless liaison officer, they made well over a thousand contacts. Those resulted in sixty five arrests in two thousand and twenty and seventy four citations. And though those numbers may appear small, our number one mission in this project is to. Provide services to these individuals that are living on the street, so that we may persuade them to move into shelters. Or temporary housing, which would lead to permanent housing, or into facilities where they could get treatment for mental health disorders or drug addiction. Each time our officers contact these subjects, they fill out field identification cards. So that we could, we may track how many times they're contacted, and you'll see the increase from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. From fifty seven to eighty three field interview cards, and that's just from our homeless liaison officers. In two thousand and nineteen, we conducted four Project W projects, and in two thousand and twenty, we raised that to five. With our goal coming in two thousand and twenty one to have one each month. And pursuant to Senate Bill three forty one, we were able to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To provide funds for housing, the homeless individuals, ninety thousand of that goes to the CityNet's outreach contract. With a tentative commitment of a hundred thousand dollars for three years to the navigation centers. And other fifty thousand to the Family Resource Center for rental assistance and emergencies. During COVID, during COVID nineteen, there was a lockdown with with no sitting at outreach case managers. Were assisting or conducting outreach efforts. Shelters were on lockdown, and there were there were more restrictions, and this all began in March of two thousand and twenty. The resources that we had at our disposal became limited. And our homeless were more resistant to accepting help, and the shelters were resistant to letting people in due to the COVID pandemic. Project Room Key began and ended on October twenty six, which released approximately seven hundred and seventy homeless back out onto the street. You'll see some statistics on the board from provided by CityNet, their goal for two thousand and twenty was two hundred and twenty street access. And they excelled that by two hundred and sixty eight. Eighty four of which were children that they took off the streets. This is just a layout, it gives gives a kind of a breakdown of where most of those people went, which shelters they went to. And just to kind of cover what CityNet's roles are, they provide up to forty hours a week, which is equivalent of one full time employee. They provide outreach for us. They outreach with not only our officers, but our surrounding agencies, who a lot of times handle the same individuals that we do. They come out on special projects when we have them, so when we conduct outreaches on days of the week that they're not scheduled to ride with us. They come out and take part in those projects as well. They manage the cases from their existing clients, as well as the folks that are in shelters already, or are contemplating entering shelters. They're on call with our Family Resource Center. They work with the Housing Navigation Centers, the Garden Grove Interfaith Coalition, which is our faith based group. They provide community engagement to assist us in educating the community in homelessness. They prepare admin reports for us, which covers accounting, fundraising, and sponsorships. They also will attend any city meetings that we requested them, or meetings with the police department. Now, this GIS map you see here is a breakdown of the calls for service that our homeless liaison officers go to. Again, the calls in red depict the areas that they are dispatched to. So again, that's a member of the community that is called into our communication center and has requested a police assistance due to a homeless. Type call, the pins in yellow are where our the homeless liaison officers have gone out and. Done self initiate activities such as contacting individuals. And this is just a breakdown of the two homeless liaison officers. You'll see the red pins indicate homeless liaison officer Brown, and the ones in blue indicate Officer Roland Perez. Again, we work with the Westminster Family Resource Center. And we're sitting that provides outreach cards to families and single individuals to help provide services to them. As well as the homeless task force that we worked with to provide a plan, which we submitted to the city last year in reference to a shelter. Now, this is the area of Beach McFadden that we've we've dealt with for quite a while. With an individual, and this kind of demonstrates some of the bureaucracy we go through and some of the red tape we go through. Which causes a lot of frustration, not only on our part, but on part of our our community as well. You have an individual like this, where he does not does not want assistance, does not want services. So we try our best, use all the resources at our disposal, such as Orange County Mental Health, Orange County Adult Protective Services. To try and get get him into facilities and get him services, get him the helping needs, not only for his medical issues, but also for his drug addiction. It's kind of been a revolving door, and our homeless liaison officers, as well as their sergeant Sergeant Drennan. Have worked tires tirelessly to get this individual housed, and they are currently working on a plan with Adult Protective Services. To get him permanently housed once again. It's just a breakdown of our parks in the city with the total number of calls for service that we've had at the parks. And this is a project that we're working on for next year, which is a homeless resource guide. That we want to prepare for our officers to not only use, but also to hand out to the public and to our business owners, which. Will show them the resources that are available to them to to help combat the crisis of homelessness. I'm gonna turn this over to Officer Perez right now, so he can talk about a couple of our success stories from two thousand and twenty.
Mayor, council members, just a couple of success stories that we had. Fortunately, I don't have the slides up here, but I'll tell you about them, we had a joint project with code enforcement. And the city yard regarding an area off Moran and Bolsa area. We had approximately seven to eight homeless people living on private property behind a business. And eventually, we were able to work with property owner, work with the homeless, CityNet, Project W. The city yard and get that area cleaned up. And eventually, the property owner was very happy with our response. Another area that we had was a project on Cardillo. A neighbor in the area was complaining about some homeless living out of residence. Come to find out, the property owner was allowing four to five homeless people living on their property, had multiple code violations. We worked with code enforcement, the property owners, family members, the property owners. And working on currently actually working on getting the house up to code and getting all that taken care of. And one of my other last case study examples is we had a homeless individual. That had been living in her car for the last fifteen years. Eventually, her always reaching out with CityNet, myself, Orange County. We're eventually able to get her long term supportive housing, which she was one of the first. First members to or homeless people to live at the new Delarosa project that we have off Beach Boulevard, so that's a success. I don't have any other stories, if you have questions, I'm here for you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Commander, and the officer for your presentation and report. Any questions or concerns from member on the city council for this item?
Yeah, I want to thank the man and woman at the Westminster Police Department for your effort to do a homeless outreach. To entreat the these unfortunate individual with compassion and try to provide help. It's a huge issue, half of your time to dispatch, got dispatched to deal with a homeless issue. And you know, thank you for all the work you do and do it with compassion, thank you very much.
Oh, I have the question for either chief or city manager regarding the funding. As I remember that our city, we approve monthly seventy five hundred for. Handling issue of homelessness, so I mean, almost a year, we're living under the pandemic. So is that still the same expand from our city for CityNet?
I don't believe our expenses for CityNet have changed, but I would have to confirm that for you.
I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
I have a question, as I understand it, the limitations of us not having a somewhere to offer. For say instance, if you hear homeless people at our park sites. If we us not having a for a bed space, does that put limits on what what you guys can do? As far as moving on, moving them off the park sites or off of other sites?
So to answer your question, there's a couple things that factors that are playing in. One, you know, we always say that being homeless isn't illegal. Two, it's a public park, so anybody could technically be there. Now, obviously, there's different municipal codes and penal codes that we can enforce, you know, like open container. Certain camping equipment, you can't just pop up a tent or anything like that. So those are some of the the things that are like on the on the outside. But if the homeless person is just at the park during normal business hours during daylight, then they're kind of allowed to be there.
From what I was getting, some some reports from speaking to some staff and other other people. If we don't have a place to offer them to go, does that limit what what you guys can do as far as enforcement?
Yes and no, we we're required to offer them shelter or anything like that. If they continue to deny that they don't want to go to shelter, yes, we can enforce some of the other, you know, refusing to go to the. Being homeless or, you know, vagrancy laws, so to speak, just because even if even if there's no bed available. If they've refused so many times, you could still enforce that, if that answers your question, I think.
Yeah, just is 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 there, do we have access to beds to offer, offer them?
So currently, we do, there's a new shelter that's split through Orange County and Huntington Beach. So we're able to get some people into that shelter, we have the armory in Santa Ana that we can use. We also have the courtyard in Santa Ana, the Orange County's opening up a new shelter. A lot more bed spaces, and that is called the Yale Navigation Center in Santa Ana. I actually have a meeting later with them this week to get further information how how that's gonna operate.
Okay. And so some of those shelters have requirements on us where we are only allowed to put one person in the shelter per day. Or CityNet's only allowed to take one person to that individual shelter per day, so oftentimes, we have to spread. Those folks out so that we have a place to take them, so it may take us a week to get multiple people into shelters. Just because the shelters have placed limits on how many people each agency can bring in.
And what dictates that, do you know, what the limit?
The the limit is either Orange County or the actual people that are running the shelter as to what they're requiring. Because of COVID, rules have constantly changed every every week, we've always get some new directive, oh, we're taking this, we're not taking this. It just, it all depends.
So you don't, you don't think there's a need for us to somehow secure more? To look into securing more beds somehow?
I mean, that's for the council determined, we did a homeless task force, I know the task force made a recommendation. You know, I mean, access to beds is always nice, it just depends, you know, if they're willing to go or not.
And that's the big thing at the end of the day, they have to be willing to go, we can't force them to go into a shelter, we do our best. That's why we try to go out with so many people, and CityNet goes with us. CityNet's real good at talking to those folks and trying to convince them that that's the best avenue for them to take, is to get into a shelter and get some assistance. But they don't, especially in these times with COVID, most of them don't want to go right now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would like your recommendation as far as if you see that. You know, you being out there so much and talking to all these individuals, your recommendation is if you need us. To act on something and secure some beds for and make it, you know, better for you guys to be able to do. And offer services and help you as well to to get those individuals into. Some either just temporary housing, emergency housing, just a bed for the night or whatever it may be.
Yeah, I mean, beds are always gonna be a plus, I couldn't tell you how many I would need, because, you know, some days I contact them, I contact people. And, you know, I get a zero response, and then all of a sudden, I get two or three, it just comes and goes in waves, and I think it just depends on the climate. Actually, you know, the weather, what's going on, what's going on in their personal lives as to why they want to go to shelter.
Okay, from the legal perspective, it hasn't been mentioned, but I think you get kind of. Talking about it, there was a Boise decision, a federal court decision, which said that. When an officer comes and tries to enforce someone setting up a tent somewhere, and said, you can't camp here. We're not allowed to force that if we don't have a bed available. And you often, you have to have a bed available, you have to offer it to them, and they have to refuse it. Once you, if you had the bed, and if they refuse it, then you can enforce, and that was mentioned. So the key question there is having beds available, and it sounds like we we do have some, but probably not many. And so. Right now, it seems to be functioning, I think the only thing I would mention from a legal perspective is that prior to the pandemic. In Orange County, we did have a lot of activity by advocates on behalf of the on behalf of the homeless that were pushing lawsuits. And and going to the court with Judge Carter and others, basically starting to tell cities that we're not gonna let you enforce. Your anti camping, we're gonna allow these people to set up wherever they set up. And you're not gonna be allowed to move them along until you get more beds. So that would be, I only raise this now because that's something that you should contemplate, you may have some beds right now, occasionally, as you mentioned. But this is something the council needs to be thinking about, because it's probably as possible, you might end up with this same kind of lawsuit situation. With this same kind of lawsuit situation and not being able to enforce. So that's something to think about. Okay, thank you. I don't know if the council, how the council feels about them. Should we direct staff to start looking into that and how? As securing some beds, you know, down the road. Just to be able to offer them somewhere to stay?
Yeah, so I want to thanks. Because Member Menzel for mentioning this kind of issue. And as I remember correctly, I think that I see that our city attorney understand this issue. More than anything else for the last several years. I had a meeting with other, I think. Most of the mayor in this county regarding a solution for homelessness. However, I think that it is a is a is it a process? And last few years, I even had a meeting with. Several mayors in neighboring cities. I think that and we. Raise up the. Concerns, we want to work with other city regarding shelter. But I think that it's still a process. But I think that it is really, I think it's really helpful in our in our city staff. Continue to explore any possibility. Yeah.
Mayor?
Please.
Yeah, I wanted to later on put on to agendaize. Something relating to that, but I thought maybe we finish up this item.
Okay.
And then later on, we could agendaize something like that. I I had something like that in mind. I mean.
That's good.
So I thought I was going to save that for later when we.
So the recommend, I appreciate it. So the recommendation for this item is receive and file. Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you for. Officer Roland and was it McCormick?
Sir.
Thank you for everything you've done and dealing with the the homeless. It's a very difficult job, not just. Physically, but emotionally, I can imagine it's very, very easy. To go home to your families after dealing with. A situation and seeing a lot of the things you see out there. So. Thank you very much for doing what you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So may I have a motion for this item?
Make a motion to receive a file?
Second it.
A second. We have a motion and second to approve this item as recommended.
That's a motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo to receive and file. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item, five point two successor agency approval of twenty-one to twenty twenty-two recognized obligation payment schedule. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and the second to approve this item as recommended by staff.
I'm sorry, I missed the maker of the motion.
Wait.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that's so made by motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Councilmember Ho. And it's to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the successor agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency. Approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule twenty-one twenty-two for the period July first, twenty twenty-one. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and authorizing transmittal to the Oversight Board. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, next item six point one appointment of council members to represent the city on just outside agency war. This is the appointment among council member that we have to do, I believe, every is that every two years?
Uh, yes, that's correct. So, yes, so every every two years. You would need to just appoint yours appoint yourselves to. You know, various agencies, outside agencies, some do have stipends, which we've listed. We've listed here. Of course, the easiest way to do this that we've done this in the past is we can go down, you know, each. Each agency or each board and you can make your, you know, your recommendations. Most of them require one delegate and do allow for an alternate, but it's not necessary to have an alternate. The only one that's that will require a separate motion. Would be the Orange County Fire Authority because their delegation does require adoption of a resolution. But for the other agency, you're able to just make, you know, all your recommendations into one motion.
All right, so I will go by order like Orange County Council of Governments. One delegate and one alternate. So. I like to so any council member. Would like to volunteer to serve in this. Agency if not, I have to I have to nominate. You're talking about the Orange County Council of Government, right? Oh, card. Yes, correct. Okay, okay. So in the past, I I was I was a regular member. And alternate was council member Doe. So. Councilmember Doe, you have time or you you have to go to work?
You know what? You know, fortunately, I had a work night and it's very extremely difficult. I can only serve as an alternate if I have notice in advance.
I understand.
I can. So I will be happy to do alternate. But we're not a front person for any of these positions, so I respectfully.
I understand. I really appreciate that. Okay, so and. Because Member Menzel?
No, not for this one. My job doesn't allow me for daytime hours.
All right. Thank you so much for that. So I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Nguyen, if you accept to be regular member.
I can. I will.
Okay, and alternate will be council member Doe, if you if you accept that nomination?
Yes.
All right. And for Orange County Public Library Advisory Board. So based on the list. Councilmember Doe was a regular member and alternate was. Vice Mayor Nguyen. How about Councilmember Doe? Are you?
No, I have to.
Okay, so you have to walk. So Councilmember Menzel?
Uh, not exact work as well.
Okay, so work as well. Okay, so. Library, okay, so. Councilmember wait, oh, Vice Mayor. Nguyen. Uh, would you like to be regular alternate if you have once? If you can't really busy overwhelmed, so I think that I have to be like regular because there must be. A person from this city council. Okay, I'm going to accept as an alternate to you. Alternate, so I will be the regular. All right?
Okay, sure.
So go down to. On County Moscow and Vector Control Board, I'd like to nominate. Vice Mayor Nguyen, and you will accept that?
Yes, I'm willing to accept that.
And Public Cable Television Authority in the morning, and I believe that Councilmember Ho and myself are regular member.
Since you guys are doing a very good job at that, I I think that you guys go ahead and and continue with that.
Thank you so much.
That means I I I, you know, I. Move a motion to for you and Vice Mayor for.
And Councilmember Ho, are you willing to accept that, right? Okay. Let's go down to Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency. One delegate and one alternate. I see that who on that? All right, based on the list I have, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
So I did that last time already.
So you want to continue?
Want to take that?
So you want to continue?
Well, if if I I I recommend the Vice Mayor Ho, I mean, Councilmember Ho.
I'm not sure like Councilmember Ho have time, so Councilmember Ho.
Which one? Which one?
The Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency.
When does it meet?
Well, four P M. I think it's right there. I say four P M. On on Thursday, maybe it's is is okay for for. Menzel to Councilmember Menzel, because it's a four P M. Meeting, so it should be. Good.
For you. This one, this one seems to only meet on odd months. On the fourth Tuesdays. I think that's what it says.
Fourth Thursday, fourth Thursday.
Yeah, I could do that one or the or the or the water board, either one.
Okay, so Santa Ana River, like one delegate and one alternate, right? Am I correct, City Club?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so Councilmember Councilmember Menzel will be. A regular delegate on Santa Ana River.
And I'll be the alternate.
Thank you so much. So next agency is Water Advisory Committee of Orange County. One that, let's see.
I think Councilmember Nguyen has been doing a good job.
All right. When are you willing to take that too?
Uh, I I've been doing that. So, you know, if somebody else want to take it, I don't mind. I don't mind.
I had it before. So if you want me, I could do it. Fine. If not, you can continue.
Okay.
All right, and.
So so. Because Member Ho will take that already, right?
So Water Advisory Committee, right?
Okay.
Okay. So next is West Orange County. Water Board. Let's see who on the list.
I but I can do that.
Vice Mayor Nguyen. Okay, so you're willing to do that, right?
I I've been doing that. So, you know, I that it it's just a continuation for me if if. If you you guys want me to do so.
So City Club. We have to have the motion for all this agency or we could able to include the O C F A too?
You can. No, you need to do O C F A separate, but.
Got it.
Who's the who's the delegate for the West Orange County Water Board?
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Oh, so who was doing the? That I must I must have missed the delegate then. Or the delegates Vice Mayor Nguyen, who's the alternate? Apologize.
I could be the alternate there.
Right, Councilmember Ho will hold with the alternate. Okay.
Okay, and that's just for clarification purposes. It does list for P C T A, one delegate and one alternate. But in actuality, I believe it's two delegates and no alternates, so.
All right.
Yeah.
So I would like to, I would like to move as recommended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. And to recap, these are the recommendations. Orange County Council of Governments, the delegate will be Councilmember Nguyen. The alternate will be, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nguyen. The alternate will be Councilmember Doe. Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, delegate will be Mayor Ta. Alternate will be Vice Mayor Nguyen. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board trustee will be Vice Mayor Nguyen. Public Cable Television Authority. Delegate members will be Mayor Ta and Councilmember Ho. Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency. Delegate will be Councilmember Manzo, alternate will be Councilmember Ho. West Advisory Water Advisory Committee of Orange County, delegate will be Councilmember Ho. And then the West Orange County Water Board, delegate will be Vice Mayor Nguyen. Alternate will be Councilmember Hope. So roll call vote on those recommendations?
Christine, just for clarification, the second item on the list, the SCAG, is that covered already?
SCAG, no, yeah, so SCAG automatically is the mayor.
Okay.
Not, he does, he doesn't get a say.
Okay, just want to that's clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero for. For that. And then we would just need a motion. Motion for the appointment of for the delegates, the Orange County Fire Authority to adopt a resolution.
I make a motion to appoint. Mayor Ta for that. Since he's doing a good job on the Orange County Power Authority for the city on behalf of the city.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
A second.
Okay, so we have the motion and second to nominating me for the O C F A Board Director.
Okay, so that is a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Ho. That's adopting a resolution entitled a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster. Designating and appointing its representative to the Orange County Fire Authority's Board of Directors, which would. Be appointing Mayor Ta. Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, so that's for the item of appointment of council member to present the city in different agency. Next item is six point two. Resolution Reforming Proclamation Number twenty. Twenty dash zero one and Resolution Number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency.
Move to approve.
Second.
Right, we have the motion and second.
Yeah, that's a yes, that's a motion made by. Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe, that's to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster. Reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right, next we have common and request for agenda item from City Council Agency Member, including A B one two three four report when required. So Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Well, first of all. In loving and memory of my mom, Mrs. Kam T. Lee. Who passed away on the twenty-sixth of December. And on behalf of my family, I would like to thank you for your sympathy and kindness. Thank you for your thoughts and prayers. We are grateful and appreciate your condolences and presence with us at this difficult time in our lives. Specifically, I want to thank the mayor and his wife and Councilwoman Ho for being there at the funeral with our family. I also wanted to thank council members Menzel. City managers Johnson and Mr. Doctor yourself and Mr. Adofu for your condolences. I just want to thank you. For your caring at the most difficult moment in of my life. Okay, I also want to thank our community services and Diana and her team for their great work. Despite, we are at this difficult times, you know, during a pandemic. But you and your team were out there on behalf of the city to serve our residents and especially our seniors. So we appreciate for that. Also, I was informed by a family member. Also, I was informed by a family member that our Westminster retired police by the name of Dennis Cow Gabrielli has left us on January third, twenty twenty one. Um, just a little bit background on that, uh, he was born in Niagara Falls in New York on March fourth, nineteen forty one, served in U S Marine Corps, which brought him to Southern California, where he was hired by the Westminster P D in June nineteen sixty four. The, the day, the year that I born. Um, he served as a police officer in the City of Westminster from June nineteen sixty four to July nineteen ninety four, which is thirty years. And was assigned a batch number one. I don't know, does that mean anything, but, uh, he has a batch number, number one. He was known to his fellow, uh, officers and community as Gabe, Gabe. Uh, during his time at Westminster P D, he was committed to serve and protect the community, which include delivering a baby, comforting citizens during difficult, uh, situation. And maintaining peace and order during dangerous, uh, situations. His love of duty and service was evident in the relationship he formed in the community over the thirty years of service. As a result, gave, uh, gave commanded a high degrees of trust and respect. Gave love to travel the country and was an avid, um, spot fan. He played on the Westminster P D soft team, uh, softball team for many years. He was a loving, loving husband, father, grandfather, and great grandfather. He dedicate, he dedicated his life to his family and community. Several of his children and grandchildren have followed his lead into law enforcement. So Dennis family appreciate the city taking the time to memorial, uh, memorialize a true hero, Westminster Police Officer Batch Number One. So with that, I ask the mayor, if possible, please join, uh, join the meeting in memory of Mr. Gabrielli. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ho?
Did you want to agenda something, you want to do that too, or?
Uh, yes, no, I have, yeah, I have nothing.
Oh, you have nothing? Yeah. Well, thank you. Um, I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. I think that this is the beginning of the new year. Things are looking up as we are getting in our years, uh, I'm assuming. Um, I hope that we continue to spread the word, um, to make sure our, our that is, that is, our residents, um, they, uh, informed about, um, COVID nineteen and availability of vaccines. As soon as possible, we can all help and trying to, um, make sure we keep, uh, keeping connected and put the word out. Uh, so I hope for a better twenty twenty one. I too, I'd like to thank everybody for your support and, um, here is a terrible year for everybody and I, I, I shared the grief with all those who have lost their loved ones. And I too have lost mine and lost my dad, and so I fully understand and very empathetic towards how you feel. Um, what I'd like to move on to is to agenda something for next time. And, um, I, um, I know what we're talking about, um, when we were on the sitting at, um, the item. That is, um, I'd like to, we worked into partnering with Garden Grove, partnering with, um, what's hard. Some reason, uh, I know staff said that they never return our calls. And so I think we need to just move on to seeing how many beds we can get from, um, uh, any, any facilities that are around, um. I, I don't know where all the facilities are, and I know there are new ones that popped up, like in one apartment bulletin. And to see if we can count how many different beds, how many numbers of beds we can get, and so we could be moving on to taking some actions in order to alleviate, um, our residents' burden of, um, the overwhelming amount of, um, of homelessness, um, in our city. So I'd like to agendaize and see if we could, uh, get those numbers of beds for the next.
All right, I honor that request, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a request by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta. It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
And motion carries five to zero to add that to the agenda.
Councilmember Ho, anything else?
Um, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doe?
Well, first of all, you know, um, I'm excited that we finally have vaccine available to, uh, our residents, uh, sixty five and older. That is, it's extremely good news. And the county, they staffed as a first super, uh, super pot point of dispensing, uh, the vaccines, uh, in this lane and four more underway, so. That's extremely good news, uh, in this, uh, in this, um, horrendous pandemic. A lot of people uh, get sick and, uh, according to Mr. Costa's, uh, right now, thirty two hospital in the, in the county. Uh, forty eight bed available for I C U's, that's, uh, that's that is unbelievable, so. I would like to, uh, call out to the resident who are sixty five years or, uh, uh, or older. Please sign up, please visit our Westminster City website and, uh, click on them and sign up for, to get the COVID vaccine as soon as possible. I don't know, uh, if, uh, if our city, the city employee get, uh, yet, um, city manager? And the P D?
Yes, some of our, uh, police officers have begun, uh, receiving the vaccine, yes.
Oh, okay.
They are the only ones eligible at this time, and our fire, uh, the remaining city employees are not, not, not eligible at this time.
That's awesome. Yeah, I, I got my first dose just early in the week, so I'm sure fine, so not blowing the dark anything like that, so I'm excited. Um, I just want to take this opportunity and thank you, the city staff, for, you know, taking care of the city, uh, doing a great job, uh, in this pandemic. Um, a couple of things I would like to, um, agenda, um, okay, number one is, uh, you know, I look at the, uh, even to the state, uh, the government ordered no outdoor dining. Um, you know, there's no evidence that, uh, the food industry causing the pandemic, you know, and I look, I look around, I've seen there's a lot of, uh, fast food restaurant. Yeah, who are capable of, uh, surviving, uh, by selling fast foods, but there's a lot of, uh, our, uh, restaurant in the city, uh, serving hot food, and in that give, and, and a lot of, uh, sense of worker who, uh, who has to work every day and they have to eat lunch, but they unable to sit down, have a hot meal without have everything packed to go. Um, well, I already talked to, uh, O C attorney in looking to the, the possibility of our own city ordinance that we allow outdoor dining with, um, specific guideline as to social distancing. I mean, there's nothing wrong with one, having one person sitting at the corner outside having lunch in a few minutes and then go. Uh, I don't see a problem with, or, uh, uh, you know, group of one or two people in the family, uh, sit down and, and enjoying lunch. So, uh, can we agenda die that and then have the city attorney look into it to wait, and we can? We can, um, pass a city ordinance that would not contradict with, uh, city accounting law in this time of shutdown.
Can I just speak to that? Um, if we do our own ordinance that goes against the state guidelines, we are jeopardizing our, um, funding. So that's why we haven't to this point.
Okay, but can, can we have staff look into that and then, and come back with a report? I mean, it is a will, there's a way. We're not trying to go against the state law. We're trying to figure out a way that we can have our own city ordinance that allow, uh, that support business and at the same, and the resident at the same time do not contradict to any state or county law.
I think you can go for stricter guidelines. I don't think you can relax those guidelines without jeopardizing your potential funding from the state or county.
But I think right now, if Councilmember Doe wants us to, to agendaize that and just look into it, and, and, you know, I think we should be able to honor that.
Of course.
So I would, I would second that, um, I would support.
All right.
Okay.
Great.
So that's a request made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that's to look into, um, a local ordinance regarding outdoor dining. The roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero to add that on to future agenda.
All right, Councilmember Doe, anything else?
Uh, one more thing, the street sweeping citation, I'd like to have it suspended until the Judd Dow lifted. Uh, you know, we have too many people staying at home, and I don't want them to worry about, I mean, that vehicle cited because they can't get up early enough to, uh, to move that car, so.
Uh, I'd like to.
Do, do we need a?
Do you have a city attorney or chief of police, or we need to discuss in the future?
Yeah, I think it's a request to add it, add it to the agenda, is that okay? Yeah, it's like, I would like to have it automatic, so every time we have a shutdown, uh, we will make everything, that's a painless, well, raised.
Okay, so I honor that request.
Okay. So that's, that's a motion, or it's a request made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta, um, to regarding street sweeping and automatically halting those, um, whenever we have, I guess, an emergency, um, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen, or, yeah, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried five to zero to add that to the agenda.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, Councilmember Menzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I want to thank, uh, all the staff, as you, we all know how hard they've been working. Uh, like I said before, taking on multiple, multiple positions and just keeping our city afloat. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Councilmember Kimberly Ho for, um, um, keeping the homeless issue in the forefront. I know, I know with the COVID, it makes it a little bit, makes it difficult, but it's, homelessness is a very sensitive issue. It affects not only a homeless, uh, community, but it also affects our residents and the quality of life and having to, uh, uh, deal with the homeless issue. Um, so thank you for keeping it in the forefront. I also want to thank, uh, the staff for, um, the report of the COVID nineteen report. And, uh, also, um, for our community service report, uh, as you can see from those reports, they're working very hard. And, uh, what they do in our community service department, they've been doing uh, above and beyond call of duty, uh, being proactive as far as preparing for the vaccines and, and, and being ready, and, and when the time comes, they're, they're ready to, to move and be in action. So thank you for that. Um, I also want to, uh, just remind, uh, residents as, uh, our, um, city clerk there at the beginning, uh, to don't forget about applying for commission positions, uh, the deadline is, I think, coming Monday. Um, for myself, um, I think I, I just want to, you know, make sure that I honor, uh, people who, who just applied for the commission. There's a lot of good people out there that, that care about our city, and I want to for myself, I want to make sure I, I, um, look at their application and see what they have to offer and, and just choose from those who applied. I understand, uh, you know, we have people that, that may be interested in it that we know, but we can direct them to make sure they apply. And I just choose from people who apply, and if we can, and I'm going to try to interview them. So, um, uh, people, please don't forget. And, uh, and that's it. I mean, I don't really know, having a gen item at this time, like, one of my gen items was homeless, but again, thank you, Councilmember Ho for that. And, uh, just thank everybody, wish everybody a happy new year, first meeting back. It's been a difficult year and, and, and somehow together, we will get through this and get on the other side of this. And, uh, just move on and, and be here for each other. So thank you very much for all, all of your help.
Mayor, uh, I know it's your turn, uh, I, I know it's your turn right now, but if you can grant me the additional, uh, I would like to have an item to, to add on, uh, to, uh, agendaize for the next meeting. Is that okay?
Please.
All right, uh, the, the thing that I, I'm about to propose is probably the same as, uh, uh, the item that very much in the category, uh, uh, that, um, Councilmember Doe, uh, stated earlier, that may jeopardize, you know, the city, you know, for the funding here. Because this is going to, uh, I want, uh, our council to look at the governor emergency order uh, by not allowing, uh, commercial business to evict their tenants. And this is going to expire in, in, you know, uh, in March or something like that. And I have several complaints about it, so maybe we can, you know, maybe we can't go against that, but, uh, we can set up, uh, you know, stricter uh, guidelines to make sure that, you know, the tenant don't take advantage of it. So I.
I honor that request, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so a request made by Vice Mayor Nguyen and seconded by Mayor Ta. And that's to, I guess, review the governor's order regarding commercial tenants and the rental eviction. Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried five to zero to add that to the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, first I'd like to thanks all the council member for your dedication and you all really patient. I know that's a long meeting. But you are, you know, show the community that you really, you really care for them, you really care for the city. I really appreciate that. I want to, I want to thanks our, uh, city manager for her dedication as well. Uh, almost a year, I think that, uh, in the role of emergency director, I believe that our interim uh, city manager give us all the, um, all the update every day. Regarding the circumstance regarding the pandemic, so I really, really appreciate that. Well, we, uh, I look at one of the item on our agenda. And for the pandemic, it almost a year. We, I think our city, we issued the first, uh, emergency order last March. So right now, like, like. So, right now, like, like the mid of January, almost a year. Uh, our city staff, our, our police officer, our firefighters, they amazing. They perform their duties above and, and beyond. So I, um, I feel so pleased and really honor that we have a really dedicated staff. So, um, really want to thanks everyone, really appreciate that. And I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of our, our former police officer, Mr. Dennis Cow Gabrielle. And also honor our Vice Mayor Charlie Nguyen mother. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
And the next meeting will be, next meeting will be, oh, we have a special meeting, close section will be on Monday, January eighteen, twenty twenty one at eight thirty AM, and the next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, January twenty seven, twenty twenty one at seven PM. Meeting adjourned.